Everybody, we're gonna come back. That was our adjourned meeting. We're gonna hear back from our city attorney with the, we can do an open session. Now, Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this evening, the city council went into closed session to discuss two items identified on the five o'clock agenda. The city council gave direction on both items. There's no other reportable action taken.
Thank you. That meeting is adjourned. We're gonna roll into our city council regular meeting for Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. And we're gonna go right to our pledge of the flag. And I get to pick tonight, Lisa, who I want to do the pledge? Hmm, I think our boy scout right there to my right hand side will be the one to pledge, so we're gonna follow your lead. So you wanna come up? There you go. We'll follow your lead. You tell us when to have a base of flag at all.
Uh, everybody put your right hand on your heart. Face the flag. Normally at my school, I just say, "Ready to begin?" When we start saying it, so. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. Good, good, good. What's your name? All right, Clark, here, you get one of these for doing our pledge tonight. Have three, and I'll see you later, and thank you. We'll see you in a little bit. You never know, I'm gonna call, lead the pledge of the flag. So anybody accepted in this room, you're all potential people to read the pledge for us. All right, Lisa, we'll do our roll call, please.
Councilmember Holworth?
Here.
Councilmember Lesser?
Here.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Franklin?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
And I'm here as well. Thank you all. Next item up, ceremonial calendar. Presentation certificates of commendation regarding Police Detective Seth Hartnell to the 2022 Police Officer, I'm sorry, 22 Police Officer of the Year and Captain Paramedic James Falls, 2022 Firefighter of the Year. So I see Firefighter of the Year Falls is here, and Chief, and... Come on down, Seth.
It's hard with the sun on.
Oh, there's Chief Johnson. Perfect timing. I slowed down, she had to buy some time to get here.
I was here, you just didn't look long.
All right. Chief Johnson. Chief Johnson, go first.
Well, certainly.
Thanks, ma'am. Center stage.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Montgomery, members of the council. I'm honored to be before you to talk a little bit about Detective Seth Hartnell, our 2022 Officer of the Year. Seth is what I like to call a South Bay success story. Seth grew up locally in Hawthorne. He was Manhattan Beach Police Department Explorer, graduated from Costa, and has gone on to become a police officer here with us. But along that journey, he also worked as a traffic control assistant in the city of Beverly Hills, and he also worked as a deputy sheriff for the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department before joining us. And so I'm so proud of Seth because there's a picture of Seth on our wall when he was an explorer, wearing a light blue shirt, and how proud we were of him to join our post. And now he's come full circle, and not only is he a very successful detective with us, he is also our Officer of the Year. And Seth is, you know, if I didn't, I didn't tell you the timeline for Seth's, you know, graduation from high school and things like that because I want Seth to be ageless, but Seth hasn't really been in law enforcement that long, and the things that he's been able to accomplish have been just astonishing. You know, he spent some time as one of our patrol officers, but he also spent some time on our mental health evaluation team, working with our unsheltered and our most vulnerable populations. And it's through Seth's work as a med officer that he received this nomination from his peers to be the Officer of the Year. There were numerous accounts of how he helped a person who was experiencing a mental health crisis, how he helped an unsheltered person get services, and how Seth really did see the bigger picture in everything we do at the police department. And since Seth has rotated to the detective bureau in September, he's done nothing but continued to shine. He was a detective in property crimes, I believe, for the first few months, and now he's our Crimes Against Persons detective, which is a very prestigious and very busy desk. And so it just tells you a little bit about the kind of person Seth is, that he spent his time with us, from a member of the community to an explorer, to returning to us as a police officer, and his peers thinking of him in such high esteem that he was our 2022 Officer of the Year.
Well, normally in my school, here's what, no, just kidding. So, thank you all very much for coming out. Thank you to my wife, to my folks who are here tonight, my friend Heidi in the back there, thank you very much. It means a lot, everybody in this room. It's an honor and privilege to continue to be a police officer for the city of Manhattan Beach. It's a very special place in my heart. Look forward to many years of service here. And this award was given to me, voted on by my peers, so thank you very much to everybody that voted for me, and I'd like to make sure that I continue to represent the police department as well as I can. So, thank you all very much. Have a good night. You know what? I'm gonna give this to him, he's here. Seth, this on behalf of the city, I know this is a practice run. We did it at Rotary already and gave an award, separate rotarians, but we read the actual of the city acknowledgement, so I'll make sure there's a commendation for your 2022 Police Officer of the Year, Police Officer Detective Seth Hartnell. So hold this up in front of you. Your mom and dad, you wanna come, get pictures up close? You can come up here. And then a group photo? Yes, I meant all of us, and they come closer.
I got the memo for short sleeves on there.
Come on, Joe.
I'm gonna borrow my jacket?
Yeah. I can hear you, I just can't...
Can we, can we just move that chair? It's like right in the middle.
Cause you can't even see me, can you?
Stand, stand out, Chief.
I'm standing between you guys, so.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much, city pin.
You're welcome.
A city pin?
Sure.
He has a badge.
There's still some cash.
Thank you very much.
Chief, firefighter, you wanna lead it on? You lead the pledge, lead the pledge. Lead your commendation here. I'll follow behind you. Perfect.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, I get the privilege of introducing our firefighter of the year. Much like our partners in public safety, this is voted on by his peers and the command staff, so overwhelmingly, Fire Captain James Falls received that for just tremendous amount of work he puts into the department. He's our comms director. He's on the technical rescue trainer. He is a fire association member board, excuse me, board member. He's Engine Committee build member. He's a Station Two committee member, and also he was a reserve mentor and paramedic preceptor. Tonight, he'd like to acknowledge his wife, Bailey's here, of 11 years, his daughter, Becca, and his son, Wade. So, James has been with the department since 2007. He's actually started as a reserve with us. 2009, he was promoted to full-time firefighter. In 2021, he was promoted to fire engineer. And then this year, in 2023, I had the privilege of promoting him to fire captain. He holds an associate's degree in fire technology from El Camino College, a bachelor's degree in liberal arts from Brandon University, and he's currently working on his master's degree at Columbia Southern University in fire leadership. He also has a company officer cert and is working on a chief officer cert, because eventually he's gonna be one of my chief officers, so. With that, I'd like to congratulate James Falls as the Fire of the Year.
Take a minute to thank and recognize my family. Oh, I hate this, I always get choked up, but couldn't do it without your guys' support and shared sacrifice, so thank you for all you guys do. Thank you to the command staff and you, Chief, for your leadership and support, and to the rest of our department, support staff and administration. We can't be out on the front lines if it's not for all of you guys and all the work you do behind closed doors, so thank you. Thank you, council, for your continued support and recognition tonight, and everybody for being here tonight. It really means the world. It takes a village, as everybody likes to hear, and we truly are a team. There's nothing we do individually. We're a team, and we succeed and we fail as a team, and tonight, this is a success, and the honor and privilege is all to you guys, so thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Franklin has this duty.
I have to present you with a city pin?
And again, Rotary recognized James earlier, so this is the repeat, so we'll repeat it again. 2022 Firefighter of the Year, Captain Paramedic James Falls. There you go, sir. Aim that and aim. Okay, good show in here. I got you.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Got you.
Any of you guys don't come down and get some photos with us? No?
Oh, I'll take one.
There you go. Wait, Becca, you guys want a photo?
Yeah.
Come on down. Come on.
How old is he?
Uh, we got seven and nine.
Do you mind? Thank you. Yeah. It's on video, so you just switch it to photo. Yay.
Nice. Welcome.
You get a city pin as well? Oh, awesome. You get a city pin as well. What do you guys say?
Thank you. Becca, stand on this side.
And you get that big camera? It's a broadcast around the world. All right.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Couple. Got it.
Thank you.
But wait, there's more. Our next presentation certificates of recognition to the Pacific Division, Pacifica Division, Pinewood Derby Championship winners, Laird Campbell, Grayson King, and Oliver Terrell. So you guys come on down here. Up here. All right, he wants to tell us about the Pinewood Derby part of it. Good man, I'm not shocked with that.
So, the Pinewood Derby is when a bunch of Cub Scouts gather to race their cars that they made. This is the one that I made.
Hold those for you while you display them. You got it?
Yep. So you do a set of races. Who wins, they get medals. I have, I'm wearing mine right here. And then there's a championship after the normal Pinewood Derby, and I won that too, so there's the trophy.
Hold that microphone here, what'd they win?
I won second place.
Hold that microphone, tell them what they've won there. There you go.
I won second place in the Pacifica District.
And your name?
And my name's Grayson King.
All right, Grayson.
I won third place. And my name is Oliver Terrell.
See this guy in the short sleeves? You love the taller guy? When he always races with us, he has a lot of weights on his car for some reason. He always wins because he's got heavy weights. We don't do it, but he does. But you guys don't, so congratulations to all of you. But hold on, get this back to you. We're gonna give you some awards here. Mayor Pro Tim Franklin's gonna give you our city pins. Only special people to get those, because that means you actually came to a council meeting. Laird Campbell? Put that right in front of you. Grayson? And Oliver, what it says, we're gonna give you yours. So first, second, third place in the Pacifica District Pinewood Derby Championship. And do you know where Pinewood Derby started? What city it started in?
Manhattan Beach.
Manhattan Beach?
Manhattan Beach.
Uh, 1950, somewhere around there?
Close enough. There you go. You know what year it is?
1960, I think?
Close enough. So, let's have a round of applause, everybody here. You got the fire, and the police, and the hearing, or you got. All the councilors, take a picture. So see that lane in the middle? Guys in the welder? Alex is gonna take her picture.
Hey, ready? One, two, three. Got it.
Don't lose, you have some more. Mom and Dad?
Now, I won the council pumpkin race, does that count?
No, no, no. Pinewood, buddy. Totally different.
We raced.
Congratulations, way to go. Proud of you guys.
It's about time for another council Pinewood race.
Steve debates, did you hear that? I need my car back.
You're gonna make it, right, Steve?
Yeah. I made mine.
That's the most fun part of the meeting, isn't it?
Oh, yeah. Especially you guys.
And then we lose our audience.
That's half our audience will be the audience.
No, but those kids.
We have, we have more meeting to go, okay? She has nothing to do, you can stick around.
Have them a sleeping coat.
Want to give them time to filter out?
Excellent.
They enjoy celebrating a fireman, a policeman hanging around. It's good. All right, our next item up, everyone, is item E, approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of ordinances. Counsel?
Your honor?
Yes.
Counselor Halliford. Oh, I pressed my button, my name didn't show up.
There it is. Now it showed up.
I'm going to be pulling 11 and 12 from the consent calendar.
Item number 11, which is the Belzy plaque proposal, pull item number 11, all right?
And 12.
And 12.
And 12. The Purchase South Bay, Andre Trugates, got it. All right, 11 and 12 been pulled.
On 16, I accept that it's there.
So what, you're not pulling it?
I'm not pulling it.
All right.
Just a motion. Comment for the record.
Sorry, are there motion buttons on the screen? I'm waiting for...
It's a little slow or something.
On our motion voting screen?
It won't, um...
Our screens are not displaying motion buttons?
Yeah, so...
He wants to go by, there we go.
Go ahead.
Get a motion by counsel for Lesser, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Joe Franklin, and voting screen?
Motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you all. Item up, city council, community organization announcements of upcoming events, one minute per person. Want to hear an item? Welcome, Josh, we like seeing you every two weeks.
Ah, thank you. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray, and I'm here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. I'd like to invite the teens of the community to learn the science of bath fizzes on Tuesday, June 27th, from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. Learn all about the science and chemistry of bath fizzes, and then make your very own. This event will be for ages 10 to 17, and again, will be on Tuesday, June 27th. On Wednesday, June 28th, from 10:15 to 10:45 a.m., children ages 2 to 4, whether parent or caregiver, are invited to join Aina the Sunshine Storyteller. You will laugh, sing, and spread your wings as we gather around for inspirational tales of funny animal folktales, songs, and news from around the world, and I thank you for your time.
Hey, Josh, one question. Has the library been as busy as it was two weeks ago? Have you seen a notice to slow down?
Oh, it is, so it was recently, we had an uptick on our teens using the library for their finals, and we have been very busy, very busy.
Enjoy the summertime.
It's a great thing.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Good evening, honorable mayor and distinguished council members. Wayne Powell. I'm a board member of our Manhattan Beach Community Emergency Response Team. And first of all, we want to thank our firefighters for attending our annual membership meeting, and they did a great job barbecuing hot dogs and hamburgers for our members and our families and their families. Secondly, I want to announce our free life-saving CPR classes that we're offering, and they're free to Manhattan Beach residents, and then 60 bucks for non-residents, if space available. Our three classes are going to be August 6th, October 12th, and December 2nd, and for, if you want to enroll in the class, or for further information, please go to our website, which is, which is M B C E R T A dot org. That's M B C E R T A dot org. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Hello, honorable mayor, members of the city council. My name's Alan Stewart. I'm the cultural arts manager, and I have the pleasure to really just remind everyone of two amazing things we have going on. First, our current exhibition, Swell, is still on view, but it will be closing on July 2nd, and on that same July 2nd, we will be honored to open our Concerts in the Park series with, once again, Salute to the Troops and the satin dolls whom you see in this picture, so we invite everyone to come see Swell while it is still up on display, and then stay later for Concerts in the Park. Thank you.
Swell, thank you.
Hi, good evening, mayor, honorable council members. Waste Management of City of Manhattan Beach would like to invite all residents and businesses in the city to take, to participate in our annual, actually, our shred event this upcoming Saturday, June 24th, from 9:00 to 11:00. It's gonna be taking place at Miracosta High School parking lot, corner of Artesia and Peck. Each household is eligible to bring up to three banker boxes of paper for safe and secure shredding and recycling. We do ask everybody, please stay in their cars and just pop the trunk, we'll take care of the rest. Information is actually posted on the calendar page of the city's website. Thank you all, and we hope to see you upright and early on Saturday morning. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. If you have something you want to shred. Our next speaker?
Hi, Alexandria Latrani. I'm the Acting Communication and Civic Engagement Manager. I would like to invite the public to join us as we celebrate the partnership and donation of five decommissioned police vehicles to the town of Pickens, Mississippi. I had the pleasure of meeting the mayor of Pickens, Mississippi today. Her name's Paulette Moore. So Mayor Montgomery and Paulette, Mayor Moore, will be giving remarks, and the ceremony's gonna be held tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., so we hope everyone can join us. It'll be in the Civic Center, Civic Center parking lot, right in front of the police station there, so you'll be able to spot us. But 11:00 a.m. tomorrow, there's information on our website, as well as our social media platforms. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for showing Mayor Moore around, I appreciate that today.
Hello, honorable mayor, council. Kristin Long Drew from the Manhattan Beach Historical Society. I would like to invite everybody to our general membership meeting on Saturday at 11:00 a.m. at Little Red Cottage in Polywog Park, where we will be featuring a special presentation on the history of the Catalina Classic, which got its start as the Manhattan Beach International Paddleboard Race. Board member Francesca Segal will be there to talk to everybody and also to give you updates on what's going on at the Historical Society. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Our next speaker? Been on here, how about on Zoom?
David Archer.
Okay. Trying to unmute?
No, he's unmuted.
All right.
Golly. You're live, David Archer.
Dave? Dave?
I'm here, I'm here.
You're up.
Okay. Good evening, honorable mayor and city council, David Archer, Manhattan Beach Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for having me this evening. I'd like to invite everyone out to a ribbon cutting tomorrow, welcoming salt and straw into our community. The ribbon cutting will be at 4:45 p.m., and then we'll have a mixer immediately following at 5:30 at the Sand Bar 66, which is below the 900 Club, and that'll begin at 5:30 p.m. And I welcome you all and the community out to a wonderful evening. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, David. Our next speaker, anyone else on Zoom, Martha? And no one here in the audience? If you have to speak, come on down. Come on down. No, this is a one-minute committee announcements. Practice run for you. All right, colleagues, Councilman Holworth, I see your button is pushed.
Enough with the buttons. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I just wanted to remind everybody, I'm sure most of you know, but school is officially out for the summer, and so there's a lot of kids out on our street, whether they're...
(phone ringing)
Really?
Could have paid for that. Or a school prank, perhaps.
Yeah. No, I'm going, I'm, anyway. So, so be aware when you're driving, you know, even, it's not just e-bikes who run red stop signs, I'm here to tell you. So everybody drive like, you know, you're looking out for this. I'd also like to mention that a bunch of us attended either the middle school promotion ceremony and/or the high school graduation ceremonies last week. It was, it's a real privilege to get to be a part of that. It's such a great moment for the collective community. And a special thanks to our police department, both at the middle school and the high school, for being there to, you know, keep everybody safe, lots of traffic, lots of people not knowing where they're going, so it was really appreciated. And especially our police department, during the graduation practice, the day before graduation, actually grilled hot dogs for the seniors. So that's the kind of, you know, police department we have, and that's just the kind of community care and extra stuff that we appreciate, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Aunt Martha, you wanna talk about your e-bikes? School's out too? Are you good with that?
Oh, that was fine.
Thank you.
Let them hear it from someone else.
Well, that's good. Colleagues, anybody else? None?
I, I, I would say just one thing is, we all get upset about it when we see it, but please compliment the children who are doing the right things, with their helmets on, properly strapped, one per bike, things like that. You know, positive reinforcement praise is just as important.
If I see it, I will.
Yeah.
That's good, I like that. Martha, what is our first announcement we have? Oh, yes, the always exciting Coffee with the Mayor. Our next one's June 27th, Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf, Manhattan Shopping Center, 3:30 to 4:30. And after that, July 11th, here at Pete's Coffee Downtown. If you have time, come by, and it's like seeing different people every time we do this. So Ray, you haven't shown up yet, so you need to work on one of these things. Our next item there, Martha? Those of you who are not familiar with this, if your child was born in the city of Manhattan Beach, we're going back to COVID days, but anyone had a child born in 2020 forward, we brought back the Manhattan Beach passport, so any questions, email our city clerk, Lisa Tamar, our associate clerk, Martha Alvarez, and they'll set this up for you. And yes, that is Dee's picture, is our example picture that we have, so let us know, we'll go from there.
It's too cute to be me.
One more. This is why, so we want to recognize our veterans. If you are a veteran or still in our serving activity, please stand up and let us recognize you while you're here. I know Gary and Chief, anybody else that are here? All right, thank you. Something new we started, and everybody feels good afterwards. I know, I feel good afterwards. It's good that we do that. Thank you. No more comments, Martha? Then we go to public comments, three minutes per person on the item not on the agenda. If it is on the agenda, you cannot speak twice. This is your time to put it out there, we can all hear it. If you speak here, your notes will not be reflected in the record, so after that, please come down in three minutes in time, come down to the dice here, and you're good to go.
Hello, honorable mayor and council. My name's Julie Prophet, and I'm representing tonight the Friends of Polywog Park. In a recent council meeting, we heard some talk about relocating trees in Polywog Park to make room for storing records in the park, storing historical records. Just wondering why we need to store historical records that way? Isn't there a place that we can find that we can restore them or keep them some other way?
If it is on the agenda, you cannot speak twice. This is your time to put it out there. We can all hear it. If you speak here, your notes will not be reflected in the record. So after that, please come down in three minutes in time. Come down to the dice here, and you're good to go.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name's Julie Prophet, and I'm representing tonight the Friends of Polywog Park. In a recent council meeting, we heard some talk about relocating trees in Polywog Park to make room for storing records in the park, storing historical records. Just wondering why we need to store historical records that way? Isn't there a place that we can find that we can restore them or keep them some other way?
This is your time to talk.
This is my time to talk. Okay. So it just doesn't make sense that we're going to rip out these beautiful trees in Polywog Park to store records. And we're hoping we can find an alternative way, and hoping you've already looked for alternative ways to store them. But there's a lot of beautiful trees in Polywog that a lot of people are very strongly, feel strongly about keeping, and it'd be good to be able to work to figure out where else can we store these things. So that's it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Our next speaker?
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Jerriann Rousseau. I'm a resident of Manhattan Beach, and I'm here tonight to express my opposition to building the second library and historical collection space in Polywog Park. I believe doing so will negatively impact our community, and I urge you to select an alternative location. Manhattan Beach has limited unstructured open space, and Polywog Park is a precious resource, particularly for people like me who live east of Sepulveda. Unfortunately, we already lost a section of the park to the middle school music building, and we need to protect what remains. There are viable alternative locations for this project. The Parks and Rec Commission is in the process of finalizing their recommendation for repurposing the Marine Avenue Pay and Play Building, and they'll be presenting this to you on July 18th. I'm here tonight to ask you to delay the repurposing decision until the Pay and Play location can be evaluated as a potential site for the second library and historical document, display. I'm advocating for this delay because I have learned that once a location has been programmed, it will not be considered for other purposes. I became aware of this as even the suggestion of using the old library building on Manhattan Beach Boulevard was met with resistance due to its current programming. By delaying the decision, all available options can be explored without prematurely eliminating potential solutions. I also kind of question the need for library services. I don't know how many of our residents are aware of the Wiseburn Library. It's like six minutes away if you miss all of the lights. And they have a nice parking lot. They have the book drop-off. You can pick up books there. So it does seem like we're duplicating services that we already have, and that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. The residents have expressed a strong desire to maintain open space through both the recent last year statistically valid community survey and in the budgeting survey. I was kind of surprised to see that that was in there. The community cherishes Polywog Park as it currently stands. So let's try and respect their wishes and refrain from further cluttering our precious park. Let's find an alternative location for the historical collection so that Polywog Park's cherished character can be maintained while still providing the community with access to our valuable history. I urge you to carefully consider the implications of building in Polywog Park and to take decisive action to protect our community's open space. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Every two weeks, come speak. Always welcome. Next speaker?
Good evening.
Evening.
Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Dave Jones, and I reside at 653 Marine Avenue. I'm here today to request a change to the upcoming construction of the Cycle II Street Resurfacing Project. The stretch of Marine Avenue where I live is often used by cars to speed down the street to beat traffic that normally goes along Valley Drive, which is adjacent to Marine. The street connects traffic between the beach and Highland Avenue and between Highland and Pacific. So on April 20th last year, here in the city council chambers, a public meeting was held where I and other residents expressed concern about, is about the project. We expressed concern about the traffic concerns, and we asked that traffic calming measures be included as part of the Cycle II Resurfacing Project. At the meeting, Eric Zandalit mentioned one potential option would be to install Swale or dip across Marine Avenue at the intersection of Flornoy. So please see the photo that I've handed out of the intersection. So later in October, I reached out again to Eric and asked about the status of adding the Swale. He said he would check with the design engineers, but he did not get back to me. This past June 6th, I again reached out to Eric and to inquire about the Swale. And since then, I've exchanged email messages with him and Gilbert Ramos, engineering. The last message I received from Gilbert was on June 13th, and I said that the design team did not implement the Swale feature. So I replied to Gilbert, asking why. Design team didn't look into it, but he has not responded. Though in summary, a Swale across Marine Avenue of Flornoy would be a low-cost and high-value addition to the resurfacing project. The project already includes construction of a sidewalk along the west side of Flornoy, so this 22-foot of Swale would just simply connect the sidewalk. The contract's already there, pouring concrete. And it's a low cost, and as they say, an easy lift for a project that has $622,000 of contingency budgeted for it. And I gave a photo of an example Swale I have in mind. So on behalf of me and my neighbors on Marine Avenue, please add the Swale to the project across Marine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Do I, do anyone want to come and talk about that for a second? I'll put a pause. Anybody else who wants to talk? So to give an update on the Swale at Marine.
Good evening, Mayor. Honorable members of the city council. City Engineer Darty and I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Jones prior to the meeting, and we're going to look into his request. I understand that he has talked to staff and reached out numerous times. This is the first we've heard of it, and so we'll definitely look into it. If it's as feasible as it sounds at face value, we can consider it. You know, important point, though, the project has already been designed. It's already been awarded. And so it's, yeah, it's a little late at this point, but it might not be too late.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Any questions? Good. The next speaker?
Honorable Mayor and you other wonderful people. You again. I'll just give some information and let you think about it. 1958, my parents left Valley Drive. We went to Liberty Village. And one of the greatest things I saw as an eight-year-old kid was Polywog Park. And we had rafts. We chased frogs. We had a great time. If kids could do that today, with all, you know, emphasis on biology and that stuff, you'd learn a lot. Caught salamanders, tadpoles, hence Polywog Park. And then, you know, that kind of went away. There was a field on Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Sepulveda, PCH, that was there forever. They used to have the Moose Fair. That went away. They built a place called Unimart, which became Disco Fair, which became Two Guys, which became Target. And I'm only sharing this because it's, it's the thing we talk about, the small ambiance beach town, is going away. So anything you can do to maintain what we have left would be appreciated by this old Manhattan Beach guy, because I've been here since 1956. And I've seen so many changes, some good, some bad. In fact, Sam Barr, who some of you folks may know, if you go his website, capital B-A-R-R-R, two R's, Sam, capital S-A-M, you can see a picture when they used to water ski in Polywog Park. And those days are gone. And they're leaving us really quickly. So I urge you to think before you do development. I have a place in Maui.
Nice.
Thank you. And you talk to the locals, and they always say, "You should have been here when." And I tell you, I relate. I said, "You should be here in Manhattan Beach when." You know, I'm not going to go into the bars I cried over when they closed down. But no, there's, again, think before you leap, you know. Nike says, "Just do it." I'm saying, "Just leave it." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker? Anybody else? Don't be shy. Hello, Ray.
Yes, hi. I was kind of reminded this last week, the difference between being a customer and a taxpayer. In business, I've done things to really satisfy my customers. When I worked for Apple, getting the hot product was always on allocation, and you couldn't make your customers happy. So I started selling refurbished to them. I was the first one to get refurbished product to my customers, which is now a common thing, in order to satisfy their needs. I was selling a property, and they'd go, "It would be really nice to have a door between the master bedroom and the master bath." So I installed one for them. I think of innovative ways to satisfy my customers. However, as being a taxpayer, it's like, whether you want to use the facility or a service, you're going to pay for it either way, or we're going to send people with guns to come collect it, whether you use it or not. And so over this stupid hose thing at the dog park, I called up and asked, and they said, "Oh, no, it's a tripping hazard. It's next to the fence where nobody ever walks. It's been there for years. No one's ever tripped." They go, "No, no, no. We don't like it. We're not going to do it." You know, it's a more convenient way to get the dogs water. I don't see what the big deal is. Kind of a dumb thing. So it'd be great to have a more innovative solution, maybe PVC pipe or something that no one can trip over. On a subject, on a separate subject, I don't know who the person is. I know they live in the tree section, but I want to reach out and... I want to thank them for saving my nephew. There was an armed man chasing him. He fell, and he was standing over him with a gun. And a neighbor came out and yelled at him for "Go away." They took him in. They took care of my nephew. I don't know who they are, but thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Scott?
Hello. Hi, Richard. I just want to say, don't take away the open space. What we have in that park is great. Do we really need another library? But when we had two libraries over at, I think it's Highview across the street, if you want a library so much, reopen that one. And you can do it in conjunction with the cultural arts shows that they put in there. If it's county money versus city money, maybe we should just give the money to Lenox or something like that, if they insist on using the money for a library. And if we can keep the money, use it to fix up the pool. We just don't need another library right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? It's a park night tonight, so.
Good evening, Council. Hi, my name is Cheryl, and it's about keeping Polywog Park a park. A park setting is not required for any library services building, from what I understand. It's not even going to be a regular full library, just services, book, pickup and drop-off. You can do that with just lockers. This is also directly against the desires of the vast majority of the community, according to the city's own survey. And it is just a grand opportunity to utilize already developed areas that have gone by the wayside, the Pay and Play, parts of Beg, parts of the city yard. It's huge in there. I know, because I volunteered for 10 years at the Manhattan Beach Botanic Garden. So I think that that top priority of maintaining open spaces and parkland, that is the majority desire, should take precedence over the second to last out of 25 in importance of library services. And I'm sure that the folks who wanted library services would not probably want it at the expense of open parkland. That's the Cliff Notes. Thank you.
Thank you. I have the Cliff Notes version. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Ruth Davies. I've lived here since 1955. I don't see Polywog Park as a park. Park, Polywog Park is a wetland. Polywog Park was, hmm, a drainage area, a scummy place for polywogs and frogs. As someone who spoke before me, it was a place that was big enough to water ski. It used to flood across Manhattan Beach Boulevard every time it rained. It has quite a history. It's good for the birds. It's good for all the wildlife. It's good for the drainage. And then the city decided to drain it, filter it, purify it, yuppify it, contain it. Oh, I had some other words in mind, but you get my point. I know we see it as a park, and I guess I have to admit, it is. I still see it as a wetland. As other speakers have said this evening, there are other places where we might be able to put these archives that are so precious to us. I have to admit that when the Red House, the old historical Red House was bred over to Polywog, I was thrilled like everybody else was. But now I think I'm wiser, and I hope we all are, that it's not the right place to put yet another building. There are other places that are not wetlands, and I don't think it belongs in the park. I think we need to preserve it the way it is, the way that we've already altered it to be. And Mother Nature didn't create it as a park. Mother Nature created it as a wetland, and I would like to see us continue to protect it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Anyone else has not spoken so far? Seeing none? How about Zoom, Martha? Okay. Heather, are you there? Heather? You're up.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Yes, I'm also in support of keeping Polywog Park as just a park. I live on the east side of Manhattan, and it doesn't take me too long to get to our really beautiful park on, I mean, our beautiful library on Highland. And I go there pretty often with the kids. I don't think people on the east side, like myself, necessarily need another library facility. So let's leave that, leave that alone. The other thing that I wanted to mention is I cross Meadows Avenue across Manhattan Beach Boulevard pretty much daily. And over the past, I don't know, six months to a year, I feel like the lights are changing too quickly, or everyone is running a red light. When I'm at, when I'm the first car there, I always have to wait like at least five seconds to make sure that there isn't a car speeding across Manhattan Beach Boulevard. I know that there was a really horrible accident, I think it was like Ladera Heights or something, and that nurse in her Mercedes went through that intersection and killed a bunch of people. And I think ever since then, I've been more, it's been, you know, a heightened thing for me. But I've noticed that there are, that there's people running red lights every single day, every time that I'm at that intersection. So I would like to see if the city can make the lights turn a little bit slower, or, I don't know, something to make the, even, I don't know if they're just running reds, or if it's something to do with the city lights, but it has been on my mind for the last several months now. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Our next speaker, Martha? All right, we'll close public, we'll close public comment. Our number city manager has been taking notes and everything else here, but I'll address the one item that seems to get the most comment tonight. The park is not on the agenda tonight, so it makes that clear. I know there's someone putting false information on Nextdoor, and he has been notorious for sending false information out in the past. I will not name him, because most of you know exactly who I'm talking about. But let's start with the facts. This council is looking at sites regarding what will be in the future. Nothing has been decided, contrary to what is said on Nextdoor. But as one agitator, nothing's been decided yet. There's no rendering, no design, no plan, no location. So everybody stops right there. Second, MBUSD owns the land, folks, not us. Right? So that's sec number two. Number three, it is a flood plain still. When the city, years ago, when Council Antoni was probably five years old, they built playground equipment on it. That playground equipment is meant to withstand water, drain, floods. Nothing has changed, except that Dr. Lehman has filed a grant to give us new playground equipment there that will withstand any flooding. What's his job? It's a flood basin. That's it. So nothing will change past that point. Secondarily, the city does not own the yard at the corner of MBB and Peck. That is owned by the school district. That's their property. We cannot tell them what to do with their property. And finally, I would say that when we get to the point of discussing the idea of any satellite library or where it will be built, everyone will be notified, and we'll see the same thing we see. We'll have any meeting about it, talk about it, but we're nowhere near that point yet. So don't rely on Nextdoor as your fountain of truth. It has not been. It is rarely ever accurate, whatever it posts. I tell everybody every time. You have a question? Truth, email one of us, not together, one of us at a time. Email City Manager Bruce Smell. Email City Manager Bruce Smell, we'll give you the direct answer, or Director Lehman. Parks and Rec runs that program. We're nowhere near deciding that yet. So, hopefully that will calm down Nextdoor for one night, so they can actually find something else they want to talk about, distort the truth with. So, that's the actual point in time today. So, everyone will leave here tonight knowing, no construction started, nothing's been designed, no location's been fixed. We'll stop there. And once it comes up, if and when it comes up, I'll be notified, we'll have a community meeting, we'll discuss it at that point in time. Right now, that's not on the agenda tonight. We'll see you all whenever it pops up, if it pops up in the future. All right? So, with that, we'll move on to our next real item on the agenda. Let's see. Our first item we have tonight, Bruce, is going to be the update on the city's efforts on state misdemeanor prosecutions and homeless court services, another item that has been misconstrued more than once on Nextdoor, and then our emails to all of our council members. So, those of you that actually want to know what's actually going on, this is your chance. One second, George, everybody. There goes half our audience. With a report from our assistant city manager, George Gabriel. Floor's yours.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, George Gabriel, Assistant to the City Manager. Tonight, I'd like to, per Mayor Montgomery and Mayor Pro Tem Franklin's request, provide a report summarizing the city's efforts on prosecution, on state misdemeanor prosecution and homeless court services. This item has become for the council multiple times, and we have provided a report, about a four-page staff report detailing everything that started March 16th, 2021. For the purposes of this report, and those in the audience, I'll quickly summarize those things, but I encourage everyone who wants a lot of details on this, it's all in the report, but I'd like to quickly summarize some of the efforts that we've made. So, in the spring of 2021, and following City Council directions, staff approached the Redondo Beach City Attorney's Office, and in this approach, Redondo Beach indicated they would consider providing homeless court services contingent on Manhattan Beach, contracting with them for prosecutorial services. However, to do so, there is a government code in the state section that requires the city must first receive consent from the Los Angeles County District Attorney. In the following months, the city provided four reports to the City Council regarding those services, prosecutorial and homeless court. This eventually culminated with the City Council considering and approving a draft one-year agreement with the city of Redondo Beach for prosecution and homeless court services in the amount of $300,000. That was a draft agreement, but it was obviously approved and given authority to the city manager to execute. However, that was pending the consent provided by the DA. Staff met with the DA's office, and in a meeting on March 9th, 2022, the DA's office verbally indicated that they would not provide consent for the city, or other jurisdictions for that matter, to prosecute their own state misdemeanors. However, the District Attorney's Office did indicate a willingness to add homeless court services in Manhattan Beach in the future. On March 15th, 2022, the City Council received a presentation from the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office regarding prosecution services. Thereafter, while some meetings were held between the city and the DA's office, no traction was made to receive consent or provide homeless court services. Just recently, at the February 7th, 2023 meeting, Councilmember Franklin requested, with concurrence from Mayor Montgomery, to agendize the discussion to see if the DA's office would meet with the city again to request permission to independently prosecute misdemeanors and participate in the homeless court. Following this, staff reached out to the District Attorney's Office to request a meeting. The District Attorney's Office declined the meeting pending any new information or developments that would change their position. Staff has met internally and is working with the city attorney to explore options with how the city can mirror homeless courts in informal precourt filing format, and this was done by City Council direction, and in fact, added with, by the City Council work plan meeting. So, this is where the city stands in terms of homeless court and prosecutorial services. This concludes my report, and staff recommends that the City Council receive the report and discuss and provide any direction.
Thank you.
And obviously, I'm here for questions as well.
Councilwoman Lesser? Mayor Montgomery and members of the council and the community, I should update what staff has provided with an experience that Mayor Pro Tem Franklin and I had this past week, when we, among many other elected officials of the region, were invited to a meeting with District Attorney Gascon and his senior staff. I think the two of us responded separately to accept the invitation, recognizing that we didn't want to get ahead of direction from council, but we nonetheless wanted to go personally, express our frustration with certain policies of the District Attorney, and see, and be prepared for questions to be able to address concerns that are consistent with what George Gabriel just described. So, for my part, and then I propose to maybe turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Franklin to see what your observations were of this meeting, to the extent we're just presenting the facts at this phase. I went with two principal questions, specifically as it relates to the failure to prosecute nonviolent misdemeanors, specifically following a special directive that the District Attorney's Office issued in December of 2020, Special Directive 20-07, which limits the ability of assistant district attorneys to bring charges for a whole host of nonviolent misdemeanors. I provided an example, an example of an individual who has been arrested multiple times for public drunkenness, for example, with increasingly adversarial sort of impacts on individuals, where the District Attorney's Office has not filed, not been willing to move forward. In response to my asking the District Attorney whether there was a willingness to revisit the special directive, the District Attorney indicated that yes, they were willing to revisit this. The District Attorney also expressed interest in learning more about our specific experience with some of these crimes, like the ones I just described, and I have provided our police chief with information consistent with that experience that I had, because it's appropriate for the police department, not for a council member, to be involved with these potential prosecutions. The other issue I asked the District Attorney about had to do with a regional homeless court, consistent with the CARES Act, which was state legislation that was enacted. This is the state, not necessarily District Attorney's Office, that's shepherding this through. Los Angeles County is not one of the initial counties where they'll be rolling this out en masse, but the District Attorney, again, was receptive to the idea of moving forward with a homeless court in the model of this CARES Court legislation. I'd like to say, with regard to those two issues, I was a bit optimistic, but the devil's going to be in the details. As Assistant City Manager, Assistant to the City Manager Gabriel just indicated, there's been a number of efforts to reach out to the District Attorney's Office that have been often followed through, but let's see. Let's see to the what extent there is willingness to engage with us. I can provide more information, but I don't want to dominate this discussion, and then I can save it for our council deliberations.
Appreciate that. Mayor Franklin?
Thank you. Thank you, David. I heard the same things. I just came to some different, I wouldn't say conclusions, but thoughts about it, because we've been entreatying constantly to try to get these misdemeanors prosecuted. We do a great job, our police does a great job. They, you know, they forward these complaints for nonviolent misdemeanors, you know, to the City Attorney's Office, and they just go nowhere. They say no. Which is the reason why we wanted to approach Redondo Beach, because not only could they, I don't know if it's because they're a charter city, or because they have a larger population, they hire their own prosecuting attorney, that they're doing that, and then they also were hosting the first homeless court. So, we wanted to have both of those services together, and it seemed logical to go ahead and talk to them about it. Again, we just kept coming up against this wall that we needed the permission of the LA County District Attorney in order to do that. And the answer was consistently no, or consistently, we're not even going to meet with you. I think that was, we counted three times that we asked. Another takeaway from the meeting this past Wednesday was that many other cities, several other cities that were there, I don't think everybody that signed up attended, but there was at least another three or four cities there that tried this same tact, to get prosecution, to get their own prosecution services for misdemeanors. Since George Gascon, on Wednesday, stated flatly, and I quote, and I quote, "We don't prosecute Flatly. So, when someone asked, "How many cities has he allowed to get their own prosecution services for misdemeanors?", the answer was zero. So, we have a lot of company with other cities here, trying to make their residents safe. The one ray of light is the fact that through the hard work of our own police department, we bundled together multiple complaints for the same individuals, doing, you know, getting arrested for misdemeanors, what we call chronic offenders, chronic repeaters. And chronic offenders is the exact word he used. So, that seems to be an avenue we can take. It concerns me, and I'm sure my fellow council members, that to get a chronic offender, they have to rip, they have to do their crime multiple times. That same, that number was not discussed as far as how many it would take. But each one of those instances is leaving a victim. Now, it may be nonviolent, but some of those could lead to violence. It could, you know, it could do harm emotionally to the people and the family and the residents that it happened to. And our answer, unfortunately, is going to be, "Well, if it happens again, let us know, and then we'll go ahead and we'll pass it on to the District Attorney." So, failing any permission to leave their services, I just want to explain to the residents how important it is, even if you don't think it's going to lead anywhere, is to report those crimes against you. Sure, you can probably, you know, with trespass, and they break a window or something, you can go ahead and clean up the window. They steal something that's under $950, report it anyway, because who knows if they're doing it to your neighbor down the street, or others within, you know, others within the city. The important thing is to report those. Report those incidences, and our police will go ahead and take those reports. And let, let's let them connect the dots. Let's let them bundle up a package of misdemeanor charges against individuals to take. And George Gascon said that we would have an audience with them, they would go ahead and consider that. Is it the ideal solution? Far from it. Because again, our, it's putting our residents in danger from these misdemeanors. But it's the only, it's the only vehicle we have right now to go ahead and do it. We're going to meet with the, you know, with the chief later on, I think next week, to sort of discuss the strategy, to make sure that these reports, you know, that residents are reporting these crimes, and then what to do with it in terms of getting it to the District Attorney's Office. George Gascon has definite theories, if you want. There's a big explanation that he delivered on December 7th, 2020. He talked about studies. There are studies that say that arresting and incarcerating people, or fining people, or trying to get them into diversion, doesn't make any difference, and in fact, is more harmful for society. That's one way of looking at it. I spent some time over the weekend trying to find those studies and information about them. The closest I came was the New York Times, and they said, at most, it's a mixed response. It's a mixed finding about misdemeanors. We all heard of the broken windows theory, that small crimes escalate into larger crimes, especially, I think, with youthful offenders. If there's no consequence, if you can walk in, and I don't even want to put it out there, but if you can walk into one of our stores, and you can steal, literally just steal, go in, put it in a bag, and walk out, that you can't get arrested for that. Well, you can get arrested. You can get arrested, but that the District Attorney's Office will not press charges, and will just let that person out with no fine, no citation, not even a citation. So, if you become a victim of a crime, no matter how small or large, please don't get discouraged, report it. We've got a fantastic police department here that believes that our residents should be safe. So, let's, so let's do that, and let's go ahead and present our cases, and try to help make Manhattan Beach safer.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Polatano?
Where are we? Are we taking public comment on this?
No, you want to make your comment first? It's just, I'll open up next, it's just to start this off.
Oh, I'll wait until after, public comment.
Anyone else? Anyone? Open up public comment on this item.
Bring the microphone up to you, by the way.
Sorry. Hi, Rita Crabtree Kampa. I just want to express, number one, I was thankful to hear that Councilmember Lesser and Mayor Pro Tem Franklin, that you got an opportunity to actually go and have a meeting with him. I was very interested in hearing that information that you shared, so thank you for that. I appreciate that effort that you went out and above and beyond to do. From what I understand, obviously, I don't have extensive knowledge, it sounds like we are not going to be able to address homeless court, homeless initiative court. The CARES Court is a different court. It is for the state, it is also for psychosis, schizophrenia, not specifically for the individual that we're necessarily seeing with public drunkenness or lewd behavior, et cetera. So, I think it behooves us to become, you know, to get a little bit more creative in our exploration of what we can do. The national, the neighborhood justice program is something, it's a program that was developed by the LA DA's office about 10 years ago. I did have an opportunity to observe an actual process in motion, and it was very constructive, it was very supportive of the individual, there's no punishment per se, there's consequences, however. And I think, as Mayor Pro Tem Franklin was stating, that consequences are imperative in order to be able to influence a person's behavior positively, as opposed to saying, "All right, you know, you just took $700 worth of merchandise, and you can walk out and nothing, nothing for you, barely even a slap on the hand." So, I ask you to look at, and national, neighborhood justice program may not be it, but we also have a prosecutor in our own city. There is a diversion program for juveniles, maybe we can expand that. I would ask you to do a little bit of research and help keep the neighbors and businesses and visitors safe in Manhattan Beach, and let's, let's show some gumption to do something proactive. Thank you.
Our next speaker? Seeing none? How about on Zoom, Martha? All right. Is I muted, Martha?
Yes.
Heather? Going once? Going twice? Heather? Did it call back in? Not picking up? Anyone else on the line?
No, that's me and Grace.
All right, we're going to close public comment. Councilor Polatano?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would suggest a different tact. I know we'd like to keep going and talking to District Attorney Gascon, because it's so much fun, so well-received, but, you know, I have no faith that... so much fun and so well received, but, um, you know, I, I have no faith that his directive is going to change unless the polling shows that if he changes his directive, he's had a better chance of reelection. But, uh, in the meantime, I would suggest a different tact. Instead of just waiting to bundle things up, what we're looking at and what the issue has been is the prosecution of state misdemeanors. And so what I think we need to be looking for is what we can prosecute as city misdemeanors under city ordinances, what ordinances we have or what ordinances we need. And I don't know whether the, if the state has a misdemeanor of a certain type that that, then they occupy the, the field, so to speak, and we can't, and they supersede us and we can't prosecute our own similar, even identical, uh, city ordinance to that respect. Or we create a catch-all. Uh, we create a catch-all under public nuisance for some of these things, especially for alcohol-related crimes, alcohol in public or things like that, that you have a, a catch-all for public nuisance. And we can prosecute those things as city violations. And if we do that, you know, I think one of the things is we need to step back from the diversion program, uh, that we've shared with Beach Cities Health District because that is now morphing into something else where, um, we've got some other agencies involved and reestablish, um, the city prosecutor's office is just that, a city prosecutor's office that then also has the ability to have diversion and to have the stick to go along with carrots of the ability to prosecute again under a city misdemeanor ordinance. We need to investigate this, find out if we can put these things under catch-alls and see what we can do at our own level. And we've had city, we've had a city prosecutor for years, uh, it morphed into a diversion program for youth, but, uh, that was when we weren't seeing many adult misdemeanors happening. Now we're seeing a great increase in those and we need the ability to enforce or at least hold things over people's head of enforcement and prosecution if they don't, um, change their ways. And so for that reason, I think we just need to investigate, uh, what we can do as a city in, in terms of what we can prosecute under city ordinances, see if we need new additional ordinances that we can prosecute under those rather than waiting or relying on state misdemeanors and the prosecution of the district attorney's office, which isn't going to come. So I would try and occupy that field, reestablish our own prosecution as something out of the city and not shared with Beach Cities Health District and go from there. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you, sir. Come to Rahaworth, then we'll go around the horn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I mean, what you are saying, Councilmember Napolitano, makes sense if it's in fact, I, I just, I don't know, I, the law as you do, so I don't know if there are certain ordinances we have jurisdiction of or that would make, like public nuisance, I would think we would, that would make a lot of sense. Um, you know, one thing that I think what you're saying is some of these crimes that have been reduced from felonies to misdemeanors under Prop 47, is that, like, that's part of the problem too, right? But that's a different problem than George Gascon not prosecuting, but it's also something that hamper, hampers us all, right? I mean, that's the whole issue with, you know, reducing, um, like a lot of low-level crimes to misdemeanors from felonies. So it's sort of like the catch and release. Um, and I'd love to see changes to that state law. That having been said, I'm all for what you're saying, but I also, I am sort of, you know, I'm curious about the neighborhood justice program, um, and perhaps that's for, maybe for juveniles, maybe that's, or for the homeless. Um, and, you know, this is just something we have to research. As Rita mentioned, care, care court is very different than a homeless court. Um, so I do sort of want us to pursue that as well, um, unless you're saying instead of homeless court, what you can see happening is making a catch-all city issue. Okay, so you're saying that, okay, got you. I'm, I'm all for that. If it's possible, if we can research it, I'm all for that. We do have to have some teeth and be able to protect our residents. So I'm all for it.
Thank you, Councilmember Lesser.
I've already had a bite at the apple, Mr. Mayor. Did you want to say anything first?
I'm waiting first till you've had your thought already. I'll come back in and say, um, for the record, we've done this in 2021. Mayor Stern and I went to meet the chief deputies and his staff for Attorney Gascon, DA Gascon. This is not new, folks. It's repeating the same thing we were hearing from the last three years ago. They told us, nice, you're like, public program, Richard, sounds good, but the DA said no. So we tried again and now you've seen Councilwoman Lesser Franklin try again and talk to him one-on-one. Could it be because election year's next year? I don't know. Does it make any better for us? No. Have we seen any changes? No. It's gotten worse. So I'm not looking to the state to jump in here. We were always told, and maybe the city attorney, bureau can jump in here, we're always been told unbeknown to another resident who claims he's an expert in the law, that says that city can hire its own misdemeanor prosecutor. We found out that's not true, but, Mr. Attorney, can the city, does the city have the right to hire its own prosecutor away from district attorney as it stands today?
The city could establish, uh, well, it's still there. We still have a city prosecutor's office, but it's not, we need the consent to prosecute state crimes. Councilmember Napolitano has brought up the fact, which we've looked at before, but also it sounds like that would, if that's the direction, we can look at that issue again because some laws are preempted, but we can certainly do that examination of what can we incorporate into our own municipal code and that could be prosecuted by, um, the city prosecutor.
Good. And there's, there's something else to it. Mayor Tim Franklin mentioned a point about repeat offenders. Only one flaw to that brilliant idea. Chief Johnson and Captain Rodriguez have to catch the guy again. Perfect. On paper, just bring him to us, Joe. We'll go after him again. That means you have to catch him twice or eight times in a row. It's a great policy to have. You just catch him and we'll take care of it. Not the way you want to do things. And this is not, folks, I'm not talking about the organized retail rings that are out there doing major thefts of brand items. That's going to be a different issue. I'm talking about the everyday theft that you see at Target and CVS and Ralph's and Vons and we're all seeing it happen right in front of us. When I was at Ross's Day, the guy runs out, I go, what was that about? To go, this guy grabbed a bunch of stuff and took off. And we're not told not to pursue them. We're told not to go after them. Did you call the police yet? We have to know about, we can't just forget it. Well, you didn't know it actually happened. Well, we called the police, but we took a picture of the car getting away, but they're gone. So it tells you what's happening here. There's no repercussion. And I don't believe the pie in the sky unicorn stuff that's out there. Oh, let's give this program a work or give that a work. By the time these guys act, are going to figure this out, it'll be much worse than it is today. So I, I agree with Steve. We can do something ourselves legally and go to stick to the second part of it, we'll the first creative non-charter law city, we're down there as charter, to do something differently. But as the city attorney told us, Gascon's blocked us every attempt we've had. All we keep hearing is the word no. We're trying to get to the word yes. Somewhat has to be a word yes. What do we have to do to get to the word yes? And if something's setting up our own pilot that we tried with Gascon's office, I'm all in favor. I don't have any problem in trying, but I'm not going to get my hopes up that we're going to find the silver bullet here that works for all of us. But I'm willing to try anything that gets as better we are today because I don't see this going away in the near future. I don't rely on Sacramento. I don't rely on our own district attorney to solve anything for us. I think we're way down the list of cities he's focused on. We're not that city. So pass out, turn the ball over to Councilmember Lesser.
Uh, with your comments in mind, Mr. Mayor, I would propose a bifurcated approach and if there is general support, I'll make a motion. And that would be, if a motion is warranted, and that would be one to explore what Councilmember Napolitano has indicated might be worth exploring, namely what can we do with our own city abilities subject or without the approval of the district attorney's office and simultaneously pursue these conversations with the district attorney's office. What I didn't mention earlier was that Mayor Pro Tem Franklin and I, along with the others in attendance, were able to meet and speak with the senior executive team of the district attorney's office. Repeatedly, they said, if you have issues, you have questions, reach out to us. We got their business cards. And we spoke with them after the district attorney was done with his presentation. He encouraged us to follow up with issues. These comments that we've just all made with our frustration are those that I would propose to follow up with through city staff if there's council consensus to do it on a dual track.
One question, how do you address the, the care court, the homeless court services?
As you indicated, Mr. Mayor, or someone, I think several council members mentioned, that is being implemented through a state agencies, the State Department of Health.
They're two different things.
Two separate things, but I think it's worth pursuing what we can get through the district attorney's office and keep, keep working it.
Councilwoman Howard, thank you.
Uh, yeah, and if I may, just to clarify first that point, so care court is, it's about severely mentally ill folks and families actually being able to decide on their services. It's not really kind of other things with homeless people. So it's a different thing. That's a different thing. But I think what, um, Councilmember Napolitano's idea encompasses is like the public nuisance, when he, when he mentioned that, that's where you can put some of these.
Right. You run, run diversion through the city prosecutor.
Right. Through the homeless, for the home.
For whoever.
Or whomever, but that's where you'll capture some of those things. So that is how some of those, those homeless individuals may be dealt with. I, I'm all in favor of both what you said, a, a parallel path and, and what we've talked about. I do want to say though, I, I would, I, I hope, because I really don't know, I, I'm, still don't know that theft even, you know, will be covered under city ordinances. So I don't want us to get these expectations that all of a sudden now we're going to be able to prosecute everything, you know, that happens at the local level, but hope, maybe we can, but let's find out. And, and you made a, the point, and I think actually maybe, uh, Mayor Pro Tem did as well, but Mr. Mayor, you said, you know, you still got to call the police. You know, it's really, it's so frustrating to residents and, and business owners when they, and they say, yeah, but they can't do anything. It's not that they won't do anything. I know, it's counterintuitive, but you got to call the police and we can't say it enough. So I just wanted to amplify that.
Thank you for that. Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Great, thank you. Um, yes, I, I like the idea, the bifurcated, um, approach as, as suggested by Councilmember Lesser. I think we probably, and we'd have to check with the chief and, and her staff, you know, we probably have, uh, a bunch of unprosecuted misdemeanors that we can maybe bundle together. So we, I don't even want to say this, we have inventory. So we have an inventory of these that we can go ahead and test the relationship with the, uh, LA County Prosecutor's Office to test what he told us and what the staff told us that, you know, uh, because he's, he did say, you know, we will prosecute chronic offenders. So let's go ahead and test that again, um, uh, with them and then go ahead and examine, get a, get a list at least of what we can through our own prosecution services, a list of the misdemeanors that we can go ahead and, and pursue and prosecute. Uh, I, I just wanted to ask Assistant to the City Manager, George Gabriel. Uh, I remember when we were still under the auspices of Janice Hahn, there was, um, I think it was still with her, there was a big announcement, we were going to have a county organized homeless court using Redondo Beach as a model, uh, and it was going to be actually set up somewhere around Los Angeles Airport. Has there been anything? And that was two years ago. Has there been anything along that, those lines?
Um, if you're referring to the grant application for this, for a South Bay Regional Housing Initiative, which is basically a homeless court, but it was actually a grant application we submitted, uh, to the COG utilizing Measure H funding, uh, we didn't have a defined location. Um, but that being said is that, um, that application was not funded because there was uncertainty over the prosecutorial authority provided to Manhattan Beach. And so, um, I do know that there are also other homeless courts. I think Torrance has one and, uh, Long Beach has one as well, but these are homeless courts that are done under the jurisdiction of agencies that have their own prosecutorial authority.
Right. And that's the same with Redondo Beach?
Correct, yes.
And that's still once a month and?
Yes.
Twice in Redondo, once in Hermosa, or twice in Redondo, I, I mean, per year?
Yeah, I think one is, one is held, uh, per month or at least scheduled for per, on a monthly basis. And there's a minimum number that are to be held in Hermosa Beach in a given year. I don't know what that specific number is though.
Right. Okay. Great, thank you. So no more comments.
Councilor Napolitano?
No, I'm fine. I mean, I just, I'm fine with bifurcating for the moment, but aside from the idea of, of bundling what we have and presenting it to the DA, I would not waste my time with the DA's office much more than that.
Oh, yeah.
And, and the, there's no reason to believe that things are going to change there unless the, the election changes things. So I would see what we can do on our own. Uh, and I would, um, like to see that, that we can look into what we can prosecute, what we can't and getting someone to do that, um, on a more, uh, full-time basis. And let's see where we can go. I, I just, I don't see it, I don't see DA doing much for us.
Councilwoman Lesser, go ahead.
I was going to clarify, does staff need a motion for the direction that's being articulated? One can call it bifurcated, one can call it dual track. Motions are always helpful for staff direction, so if you'd like to do that, we'd appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, did you want to say something first?
I will. I'm just going to add that, um, we have met Mayor Stern and I back then with the executive team, not with the same people you met, David. They did good, they listened to us. Great idea, Richard, let's see what our boss says and didn't go anywhere from there. But I will also point out that, folks, 2017, we had 41 reported homeless. I usually report it because the county has its own math system that they apply, whatever real numbers you find is, the county will say, here's a van, we're going to multiply it by 1.25, or 1.5. They're going to assume that someone else is going to join that van at some point in time. So we have 41 reported, that's the report the county puts out in 2017. The number is nine, nine, 2023. So yes, I'm cognizant of the homeless. I'm not, that's not the main focus every day that I see. I hear more about the retailers and the impact of the residents and their fear of theft, that there are burglary. That's not, I'm not so concerned with homeless. That's not their everyday drive. They're well aware that Chief Johnson and officers have caught the burglars twice. Same crew, same day. How did it go? Can you imagine? Twice. Same crew, same day. Imagine what you tell residents, well, how do you make us safe, Richard? Public safety is number one. How am I safe? How, how do I, how do I not feel violated that a house has broken in two, twice, or our neighbor's broken in twice? What are you going to tell them? I can't point at Gascon and say, this is the reason why. I can't talk about property, say that things are going wrong. It's, but the fact that you catch a release doesn't instill any kind of safety in anyone's mind. They don't feel relieved by knowing that. I'm not telling Councilmember Lesser and Mayor Franklin not to keep talking to district attorney. I mean, it doesn't hurt to talk, but I, with Steve on this one, I've been in that boat before. I know how it's going to end. I know that movie. So we've got to find something else to do. And, and I agree, let's try something else out that we haven't done before and see what happens. It can't be any worse than what we have today unless leadership and district attorney's office changes in 2024. But until then, I think we're, we've been on our own since 2021 and we're still on our own. So why not? I see a first and a second by Councilmember Lesser and Mayor Franklin, barring any other discussion.
Can I just articulate, Mr. Mayor, I share your skepticism, but I see an opportunity here that we should at least pursue through city staff and our police department ultimately in getting these cases to the responsible district attorney's, uh, senior staff members and see what happens. So the motion would be first to pursue that track, these two parallel tracks, working with the district attorney's office through city staff and the police department. And then the second is to bring back further information consistent with Councilmember Napolitano's proposal that would explore what we could take on as a city with regard to either changing the nature of certain crimes within our city under our municipal code or perhaps pursuing cases on our own through a city prosecutor's office. And Councilmember Napolitano, if you wanted to clarify that second piece, please do.
What needs to be clarified?
In terms of the second part of the motion, in terms of what should be brought back to be discussed. Is that even further?
I thought I said it all.
Yeah.
I think I'm watching.
Okay.
The reason why, thank you. Mayor Franklin, I brought this up is because, no. What I brought this up is because we've heard some people tell us that, well, can't you just disregard the state? Disregard district attorney, do your own thing. Don't you have police there? Do our own thing? Doesn't work that way, folks. Our police job is to catch them. DA's job is to prosecute them. So why we can't do our own thing until this, we need to creative, try to find another avenue there, but isn't it that we haven't tried? We haven't gotten someone to give us the word, yes, we can do things. So that's why we're here trying something else. So with that, we'll do a roll call vote, please. So with that, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Motion passes five zero.
Great, thank you all. Good comments, everybody. I appreciate that. We're on next, item H, consent calendar approval. Looking for a motion, items four through.
Councilor, or Mayor Pro Tim Franklin was.
Yes. Right, four through 16, exception of 11 and 12. I see a, I see it. First by Councilmember Homeworth and a comment by Councilmember Franklin.
Yeah. Thank you so much. I'd like to, I'm not going to pull, and I didn't pull, item number seven from the consent calendar regarding the agreement with the Manhattan Beach Firefighters Association, but I just wanted to make a couple of comments, if I may. So I'm pleased and proud, well, to have voted to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Manhattan Beach and the Manhattan Beach Firefighters Association and want to publicly commend those who were involved in its successful completion. I want to thank the Manhattan Beach Firefighters Association and their officers and members for working to represent their needs, safety and well-being. You are to be commended as well for professionally serving the residents of Manhattan Beach and placing the priority of their needs above all else. It is appreciated by the council and our Manhattan Beach residents. I'd like to commend the City of Manhattan Beach staff for their work in representing the goal of the city council to provide the best and most sustainable service to the residents of Manhattan Beach. Acting Human Resources Director Stephanie Swoford, Stephanie? And Human Resources Director Lisa Jenkins, maybe on Zoom, spent countless hours consulting with the council on the intricacies of the memorandum of understanding and other matters. Appreciation also goes to our city fire chief, Mike Lang, for his impeccable professionalism working with everyone on all sides of the, for this agreement. His deep knowledge, experience and sense of fairness are particularly notable. So thank you, chief. I'd like to thank former Mayor Hildy Stern and former Mayor Suzanne Hadley of the previous council for their tireless efforts in the process and their contributions towards this successful agreement. Finally, I want to thank the residents of the city. Your input was extremely valuable throughout this process. Your feelings for the department, for the fire department are not unlike ours as we treasure having our own fire department to keep our loved ones safe. You stuck with us as we all worked to find a sustainable solution, agreed to by all. Those of us lucky enough to call Manhattan Beach home are reminded, our fire department, police department and schools are the cornerstones of the reason we chose to live here. Thank you all very much.
Well done. All right, I need a second on the consent calendar items. Anyone else? Councilmember Lesser, first and a second. And roll call, please. There it is.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, items removed, consent counter, item number 11, consideration of Velze plaque proposed by the South Bay Board Writers Club.
Council Napolitano?
Thank you, your honor. I did pull this, one, because we've received a lot of input on it, I know that folks wanted to speak to it tonight, so that's why I pulled it. Also, because there is a, a compromise wording here, it's still open to further interpretation if we choose to do so after the input that we receive. It's, it's, you know, taken away the, the fact that it was the, the claim that it was the first surf shop. We've yet to find any documents that support that. My understanding is, but again, I, I think, given the interest in this, I wanted to hear from everybody who wanted to speak to it. If no one speaks to it, then we can simply vote on it, but I wanted to give them the opportunity. I know we have some, some mature members who have expressed a lot of interest in this. Politician. So I want to let them, I want to let them speak to that.
Well done. All right, counsel, anybody have questions on this? Then I'm going to take, we don't need a staff report, I'm good. Public comment, anyone want to talk about this? Please come down and talk to us here.
And immature ones, too.
Yeah.
My goodness. Well, that takes the pressure off of it.
There you go.
Good evening, counsel, honorable mayor. On behalf of the Manhattan Beach Historical Society Board of Directors, we support the compromise language with the exception of removing the capitalization of famous and also the apostrophe in 1950s to make it grammatically correct. The idea of this plaque is to celebrate Dale Velze's contribution and legacy to the world of surfing. And what greater way to do that? Here in Manhattan Beach at the site where he undeniably shaped and sold boards. We really hope that this can happen quickly, soon, and, and it's an awesome possibility, sorry, it's an awesome opportunity to celebrate Velze's legacy.
Thank you, Kristen. Who else wants to come speak on this item?
Hello again. I realize how naive I was years ago with thinking that proposing public art, that seemed like a no-brainer, is really a lot more difficult than what I thought it was going to be. So I applaud you guys for your patience in handling this stuff. And I really want to applaud Jackie May, John Leninger, Bing Copeland, Roy Bream, Matt Velze and others that have spent 10 years trying to get this thing done and do it in a way that they believe truly honors Dale Velze and done in an accurate way. I respect the efforts of others to research and to confirm what's being claimed, that his was the first surf shop in the world established in 1950. And I, I think what I've come to realize is looking at, as people read some of the history about it, a lot of what was read, I think, can be misinterpreted or it can be explained away. And there's a few points that were brought up that I want to address, just to share our side of it. Early on, I better go quick. It was brought up that Pacific Homes was making boards well before Velze had a shop, and that's true. They, they did make boards, but they sold them through department stores, beach clubs. So we're not saying that that's not accurate, but we wouldn't consider those places a surf shop. It's like saying Costco's a surf shop because they sell wave storm boards. It's two different, completely different things. There is also the point brought up about no building records in the city show that Dale Velze owned or operated out of that building. There's a shoe repair person. That's true. Matt Velze said it was sublet. Everything was done cash back in the day, so there wasn't any tax records about, with, about that type of stuff. Next was that he was drafted in 1950.
Oh, my arrest is calling, want to make sure they're heard.
That? Pardon me?
Go ahead.
Next was that he was drafted in 1950, and that is also accurate, but he left, came back after being injured. He was operating before then and came back. So there's, anyhow, the point is, we can explain away all the opposition objections to this. And we did compromise on the language, giving you folks two options, the compromise version and our preferred version, which I believe you've seen. Thank you so much.
Tom, one question. Well, you said you've been, you said you've been doing this, trying to get this heard 10 years. Wait, step over here, step back. So you've been trying to hear this 10 years? You brought it to the council 10 years ago?
11 years.
11 years you brought to the council.
Jackie, I don't know if it was brought to the council. I wasn't involved back then. I'm kind of the speaker on behalf.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker? Anyone else wants to speak on this? Really? All right.
Good evening, counsel. I wanted to read a quote from my favorite surf historian. He wrote, "Demythologizing the sport, in fact, was another goal of mine. I couldn't wait to sludge away at the cheerleading and boosterism and perjured nobility layered onto most works of surf history. Pulling down shoddy historiographic handicraft is by itself, I admit, pretty satisfying, but the real purpose and the real pleasure comes from the fact that the mortal, ground level version of events is, almost without exception, more compelling than the legend or the myth." Now, I agree with that 100%. And to Tom's point, there are points that we can argue about. I believe that unfortunately, the clear weight of evidence doesn't support their initial plaque. A consensus has been reached to use the phrase, early 1950s, which I absolutely can agree with. And sometimes compromise just has to be reached because they can't prove their side. We can reasonably prove our side, although there is room for quibbling over some details. I respect the fact that Mr. Velze was a very influential individual in the sport of surfing and, to put it as nicely as I can, quite the character. And his contributions to surfing are undeniable. So the plaque as currently agreed upon by all the parties involved, I agree with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
When's the contract due?
Anyone else? No lying down here, folks. Come down, you want to talk.
Good evening.
Evening.
Mayor Montgomery and city council. Yes, I've been working on this for 11 years. Initially, I brought, brought it to the Historical Society and Mr. McCauley told me that I could not even prove there was a surf shop there ever. So the way it came about is I posted a photograph of the, what's at the location now, and Bing Copeland and I talked about how there should be a plaque there honoring Dale, who pretty much invented the modern surfboard on that spot. So I, I couldn't get anyone to listen to me for about 10 years. Last year, I wrote to Mr. Napolitano and, and he, he agreed that we should do this and we went forward and we thought we had it. A week before we were going to, you know, put in the, have a ceremony, I was told, no, we're going to have to discuss this. So Mr. McCauley once again came forward and said, you better be careful, there's no records. Well, I was born in 1951, but we had a phone and there's, our phones are not in the phone book. The records weren't, record keeping wasn't that great back then. We have numerous, high-profile, well-respected professionals in the surf industry testifying and writing letters and signing their names, including Matt Warshaw, who is the consultant on surfing for the Oxford English Dictionary, saying that it was 1950, the first surf shop, but that's not good enough. You want to have a rental agreement. Apparently he sublet from Jimmy's Stuitorium and the guy, anyway. So I, it's, it's just sad to me that, that this, this can't be, you know, that he, that it can't be the world's first, because it is. I, I've talked to, I can't even tell you how many people, the, the people at Historical Society don't have a, a history in surfing and they don't know all the people we know. They haven't talked to all the people. I wish they had, I wish they could have, I wish they still could. But, but it's, I guess that's not going to happen, so we have to compromise and have a generic plaque, which is very unfortunate.
Thank you, Jackie. Your time is up here, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Anyone else here has not spoken on the plaque? Will I speak about the plaque? Has a plaque. All right. Saying now, we'll close public comment. It sounds like here that everyone's in agreement that they don't all agree, but they agree to the compromise. So with that said, Council Napolitano, I'm sorry, do you have any comment there? Steve, it's yours.
Yeah, a couple of things. And, and first of all, I appreciate the grammar issues that were pointed out, the capitalized F and everything. We put the, the F in surfing tonight, but. You know, I, I don't know really how we came to this even though, because surfboard brand as opposed to shop. I don't know where the, the word brand came from and why, you know, we're using that. To me, it's almost promoting the Velze brand that's still in existence, whereas I think we want to be specific to the idea that this was a shop, this was one of the first. And I'll tell you, I'm not opposed to saying that this Dale Hawk Velze developed or opened one of the world's first surfboard shops at this site in the early 1950s.
Okay, recommendation?
I don't know why developed his world famous surfboard brand, but just, doesn't, doesn't seem like, I don't know what that says, to be honest. I, I think we know what we're talking about here. It's been said before, surfboard shop. That's what the issue is, whether this was the world's first. It's certainly one of the first. I think we can agree on that. So I would suggest that language change.
All right, noted. Councilor Homeworth?
Well, you beat me to it because I, yeah, when I saw brand, and I know people have worked on this, I get it, but that's, we're sitting up here and, and brand just sounds, it sounds commercial. And a shop, the shop was about a passion and it located in Manhattan Beach, just up from the pier, and people could go surfing there. And so shop, I think, is more true to what they're trying to honor, because it, at least that feels to me. And so, and it's fun, it's really, I just wrote down, you know, Dale Hawk Velze opened one of, I literally wrote this, one of the world's first known surf shops at this location in the early 1950s, so.
I appreciate your plagiarism.
Yeah, yep, yep. I wrote it. But I totally agree with you and I, and I just, I know, I really appreciate people, this is going to sound weird, I appreciate people arguing about the facts and trying to get, you know, what's accurate and what's, you know, what can be proven. But I think the group of this, I think it's the South Bay Board Writers Club, I, I hope I get that right. I mean, I think they have reasonable proof too. So, and I, and I do think what we, what I, what I agreed to or what I kind of said, or maybe Steve said it the first, sorry, Councilmember Napolitano, the first time this came to council was, there's always turf wars about this stuff, right? There's always these claims, like, you know, there's a turf war, if you will, between Santa Monica and Manhattan Beach about where beach volleyball was invented. And if you look at the trash cans on the strand, the recycling cans say, and the trash cans, Manhattan Beach, home of beach volleyball, right? Which we all think it is. But if you go to Santa Monica, they claim, and they told the Olympic Committee, no, beach volleyball was invented here, we're the home of beach volleyball. You know what? You know, is any, but, I don't know, it's, that's what we do. So I really want to, I would support a motion that would be open, you know, the world's, one of the world's first known surf shops at this location in the early 1950s. I think that does a lot more to honor what the contributions.
Okay. Second, Mayor Tim Franklin.
Well, I'm just going to go out on, not on a limb, but on my, on a board here and, and just say that something that I liked about that, you know, the way it is now, when you say it's, it's a brand, it's a brand that lives today. And that's a great honor, you know, is to show to the younger folks that that, that board came from that time. So the shop, you know, might come and go, but the brand lived on. So I didn't find that as bothersome, you know, on this, but I'm going to back up and just let the, let the more Manhattan Beach natives.
Let the waves flow over.
Fair point, too.
Anybody else have comments? Folks, those of you scoring this at home, we've talked about this item 30 more minutes than we did about our annual budget. I was clocking it to see if we passed that time. We've had 30 more minutes talking about this, the annual budget. And credit to Jack and your team, we've taken 11 years to bring to the council, this council, to make sure, move forward. So with that.
I'm not even a surfer.
A first, Councilor Homeworth, a second, Council Napolitano, roll call, please.
Can we, can we clarify exactly what the language is?
Yes.
My motion, oh, golly.
You wrote it down right here.
I did, but I just want to be sure.
Do we have it from before?
Dale Hawk Velze, I have, Dale Hawk Velze opened one of the world's first known surf shops at this location in the early 1950s.
And where are you going to put that in? Surfboard? Surfboard shops?
Surfboard shop, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where do you want that to go?
The same place, where the plaque was going to be.
My second stays.
Excellent.
Excuse me, if we could clarify, was it the site or this location? Sorry.
I had site, whatever you want.
It's shorter.
Okay.
Four letters.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else have any changes? Kristen, you good? All right.
I better learn to surf now.
Sorry. I'm thinking about your 30.
Motion passes, five to zero.
32 minutes, actually.
11 years and 32 minutes.
Wow.
No, but we had five budget meetings.
That's true. Item number 12. Consideration of approving a purchase order to South Bay Foundry for tree grates for the downtown Manhattan Beach and north Manhattan Beach Business Improvement Districts, pulled by Councilor, sorry, Napolitano.
Yes, your honor. Speaking of surfboard shops, this has nothing to do with that. But having been the liaison to the north end Business Improvement District before and there are discussions there, and seeing what we've done partially downtown, this design just so underwhelms me. And I know it's off the shelf for the, you know, putting around the trees there. But we've got much better designs we've implemented downtown. Why aren't we implementing the kind of raindrop design? Why aren't we doing that up here? Why can't we get that? Why do we have to go with the standard, this is a grate, this is the best grate of all grates?
The greatest grate?
The greatest grate of grates.
Questions understood. Field Operations Manager Sean Roberts will answer your question.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. So the difference between north Manhattan Beach and downtown, the grates that we have in north Manhattan Beach, those were installed at a time where trees were put in directly in the center of the tree well. So we had the luxury of installing the tree, then installing the grate. Now in the downtown area, we're dealing with an existing condition to where a lot of the trees are off-center, either left, right, forward, or back. This grate design allows us to manipulate the opening to accommodate the location of the trunk currently.
We can't do that with the other designs?
No.
Because that'd be, so, to be honest, there have been a number of planters out there where trees were recently, and they're not there anymore. And they're planted right in the middle. I don't know what we're going to do with those, but, okay. I mean, it's ugly to me, but you guys can live with it.
Any questions for Mr. Roberts here at the council? All right, then, public things, step backs on for a second. Public comment, please. Anyone on the tight here who'll talk about grates? No one? Anyone on Zoom? No one now? We'll close public comment, council?
I mean, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Councilor Lesser?
Just to follow up on just the question of Councilmember Napolitano, and just to confirm if I could, whether through you, Director Lee, whether there are alternative styles available that might also have that concentric design? Or was this truly just it after a search? Is this the presumption of staff? Or did staff actually review what was out there?
So we've tried to acquire grates that will meet the need of safeguarding the sidewalks from trip and falls and focusing more on that than the artistic design. I would admit that. My understanding is that the prior grates were developed by a foundry that's no longer in business. And so we didn't have that vendor to go to. If it's the council's desire for us to explore something that is, has more artistic value, we could do that. As Manager Roberts mentioned, you know, one of the challenges we have is trees at various stages of their maturity. And some of them probably dead center, that we could get something more artistic. Something, some of them are offset, and it's going to be a trick to get these grates installed in the first place. And trying to mitigate the trip and fall hazard was really the primary aim of the project.
Okay. And what I did not hear was a comment about cost, that these perhaps are less expensive than another one. This is the one that's appropriate for the need here? And that's why the staff is selecting this type of grate?
Correct.
That's all for now. Thank you.
Councilor Paul.
Just to reiterate, I mean, this to me, it's not a small purchase. It's $200,000. I just, you know, when we talk about vision, we talk about a redo and a refresh of the downtown and other areas. This is not the first design that comes to mind. It's utilitarian, I understand that. I guess I would look to make up for design of other things. I keep wanting to redo the sidewalks down there and set aside money for that. Can't seem to get traction on that. But our downtown and some of our commercial areas are frankly, we benefit from our location, certainly, and we can just let things continue to deteriorate. But our commercial areas are looking shabby. They need improvement. They need upgrades. Those tiles are horrible. They're broken out in many places still. They're filled in in spots with just cement or they've been, we've got blue cement. It's a whole mishmash of look down there. And, you know, we're spending $400,000 as a consultant to tell us about outdoor dining and other things. And yet, you know, we're still not spending a penny so far on infrastructure that uplifts and revitalizes, improves our downtown. So, you know, these Band-Aids, I get it, trip and falls. We stick out decomposed granite in a lot of the openings too and create those at sidewalk level. I mean, I'm not a fan, but I'll see where it goes.
Councilor Hoerth.
Well, so I want to ask though, I mean, could we direct staff to go out and make it more aesthetically pleasing? Could you, you know, I think what we're struggling with or what staff is probably struggling with is they want to get them installed so that we reduce our risk and liability. That's probably, but is, could there be, I mean, I don't know what they were charged with initially. So was it go find something that is cost-effective and/or it can be done relatively quickly, or not quickly, but, you know, in a timely manner? Or because maybe they weren't given the direction, hey, listen, you know, we've been working on, you know, wave fighting, we've been working on all this stuff. Make this really simple but gorgeous, or simple but nice. You know, could we, should we give them that direction rather than just say, okay, well, this is what there is, this is what exists? So the question is, one, could council send you back? Is, are there other options out there? Because you weren't looking for something that would rise to an aesthetic level. Is that possible if we send you back? The other question would be, are we in jeopardy? Are there some danger areas that if we don't do something, I'm going to trip while walking my dog?
Throw some mulch down.
Or, you know, like you said, so.
So I think certainly we could look farther and wider. We do have constraints, like I mentioned, with trunk size and location and whatnot, which is a limiting factor at some of these areas. We do have new king palm trees that we're looking to acquire for some of the vacant tree wells. And so there potentially is some opportunity there. You know, with these types of tree grates, we're looking for something that would safeguard the sidewalk. I could say honestly, the Public Works Department doesn't think they're ugly. But certainly that is in the eye of the beholder.
Sorry.
And you're right, we weren't going out there with a specific charge on how decorative they could be.
And that might be, if I may, you know, maybe some comments, like we want it to be a certain color or a certain shape or whatever might be helpful to them if we want to send them back out. I'm okay approving it, but if we really want to make this an opportunity, then let's take it.
Councilor Malesser?
I have one follow-up question, which Councilmember Napolitano's comments triggered. And that is, to the extent we're exploring perhaps some changes in the hardscape with our outdoor dining permanent solution, are these grates going to be flexible, interchangeable for whatever might be redesigned, to the extent we might be widening sidewalks, for example?
So not knowing what that ultimate design will be and when that will be, my recommendation from a risk management perspective is let's get these grates in as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Mayor Tim Franklin?
Yes, I'm the world's worst gardener. But do we have DG, decomposed granite around those trees now in the well?
We do. And on the tree grates that don't have, or the tree wells that don't have grates, and that is a temporary solution, it's not a long-term solution. It's a struggle to maintain because we have to constantly refill and repack. And so, you know, a legitimate tree grate is the solution.
Okay, so if we are going to put a grate in there, would we treat the soil? Would we loosen it up so that the water can go ahead and?
Absolutely.
And get down?
The tree grate is designed to prevent the public from falling into the tree well as well as making sure that it's properly irrigated so that the tree thrives.
Right, okay. All right, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No further questions for me. I think we're good on this one.
Okay.
I think council answers the questions they're looking for. With apologies to Steinbeck here and Grates of Wrath here we're talking about. Wow, talking about grates. Yeah, I didn't get the memo about having decorative, if that was an issue. I was surprised the north end didn't come down and say something to me about it. Or downtown BID, and Jill's probably buzzing me as we speak, at downtown, about decorative. If that was a charge, we should have told Public Works at the beginning. I don't remember that conversation. So maybe we did. And I don't think we did. Or Sean would have told me, we can't find decorative plates. But if there were, if there were out there, I, look, I'm all for it. Someone's got decorative plates, I'm cool with it. If not, then, you know, I'm also worried about the next thing, that we'd let someone else say, why didn't you guys do anything about it? It's been sitting there for six months. And we sit it on our hands and say, we're looking for the perfect grate that's going to fit here. So if you guys are going to move it forward or you want to delay it, looking for the perfect grate, up to the rest of council.
I asked a second at first.
Was there public comment? I'm sorry.
Do we have public comment on these grates?
He did, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I thought so. No one buzzed in from north end or downtown. So you want to make sure I did it again? I'll reopen it. I'll reopen public comment to make sure we did this. Anyone here want to talk about grates? No one? How about on Zoom? Anyone calling from north end or downtown or anywhere else? So we'll close public comment for a second time. Public comment's been heard twice. No one else has talked about it. So you want to give her a second? All right, I'll make a second. There you go. No further questions? Roll call, please.
Motion passes, four to one.
Supremo to Bridge, just put you in mood.
Do you guys make a break before you go on the next item? Okay.
That'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I knew I was going to hear that.
Very good idea you had.
All right, folks, we're going to take a seven-minute break. We're back here at 8:07. We're in recess till then.
There's some brighters out there, the longest day.
And then as we expand, usually that Monday morning, the week of the tournament, it will take the lower south, the lower north lot over as well. And then come that, usually that Thursday, we'll open or we'll close the upper lots as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Horwath.
Yeah, following up on Councilmember Lesserman's, Lesser, sorry. I said Lesserman because I got an email last year from someone with the last name of Lesserman, you know, complaint, not complaining, but lamenting the fact that people could no longer watch from the pier. It was sort, it felt like so a very local thing to do. And I'm just wondering, was it the AVP who proposed the change of the design? Or did we propose it? And what is the reasoning for having, you know, the center court in the location it's in now?
It's been a few, I think we first started, correct me if I'm wrong, a few years before, right before COVID, when we shut down in 2020, we didn't hold the event. But we've had this concept a few times with the two courts between center court and the pier. And it does serve a greater number of people.
I, that's all I need to under, I just need to understand why. Like, you know, you can't flip it, but, um, okay.
AVP has added more games on that, so.
Got it.
It's more spread out for viewership.
Okay.
As opposed to, in the old days, Sunday, just having the center court.
That's really helpful.
Being too, you know, it serves more people, viewers.
Great.
Mayor Tim Franklin?
Yes, thank you. Hi. I just wanted to confirm, so when there, so when you're on the pier and you're looking over those two courts, the semifinal courts, and you're looking now at the skybox structure, there are televisions on those sky.
Correct.
That are, that are projecting the center court activity.
Correct.
So people don't see it in person, so to speak, but.
Correct.
Via those, uh.
Correct.
Via those television screens.
Yeah, I'm sure if you recall, last year is pretty fascinating because it did gather a large amount of people. It was almost like a picnic in a way, prepping and putting their blankets down and getting, securing those seats in front of that Jumbotron, not just for the finals, but earlier in the day on Sunday. And, uh.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to confirm because the language said something about public view of the center court.
Mm-hmm.
That you can't.
That was one of the things we did want to expand on too, because I, forgive me for the, forgetting the year, but they also did that as well on the south side of the center court, and that had the same attraction as it did on the north side.
Yes, okay.
With people, you know, it serves a larger fan base, so.
And then my only other question was, um, the difference between serving beer and wine. The VIP, in one area, it says the two VIP sky decks on the north and east end of sides of center court offering beer and wine services. And then on the next page, it's talking to them about the AVP has proposed serving alcohol. So is it just beer and wine, or is alcohol gonna be?
For specifics, could we?
Just want to get some clarity of that.
Over to Mr. Owl.
Hi, Honorable Mayor, City Council. It's a full-service bar in those VIP areas, but primarily we serve beer and wine.
But there are other spirits, so to speak.
There'll be spirits there.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Anything else for him?
Uh, no, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have we been, we've been fully allowed to ser, to serve?
Yes, we.
All these different drinks.
I get all the.
We get the ABC licenses.
ABC permits through LA County Beaches and Harbor.
Okay, great, thank you.
Are you good, Joe?
Yep, all good, thank you.
Councilor Palatano?
So, something different, but what about Jumbotron in Polywog Park?
I love it.
Folks who don't want to, well, we can put it in the, where we're putting up the library.
Too many trees.
With grates around it?
With grates around it.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Laser shooting out of it.
We do have an inflatable movie screen we could provide.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think it's something, an alternative for folks who don't want to hassle the crowds, who maybe live on that side to watch.
They do it alternative sites, you can't arena, they put a, you know, Jumbotron outside, people can watch it remotely.
They do that now for lots of World Cup events, they have the.
Hockey. All right. Sure it's in Director Lehman's budget.
So the only question is, is it, would we get the feed from ESPN, or would we get an ESPN two?
The finals.
Or ESPN two?
And then you could, ESPN plus and the Bally's streaming.
The Ocho.
Mine said ESPN eight, the Ocho exactly on it.
Yeah, you couldn't get directing that far away.
Maybe get Vince Vaughn to show up and sign some shirts while he's there. No further questions? All right, thank you, Archie.
Thank you.
I'll open up public comment on the MB Open, who's got questions about this? Then I'll go to Zoom. If you're wondering what we're doing, folks, our bell is, our timer is off, so the Zoom coke will raise their hand, that'll be telling you it's time. Your time is up to speak at that time. So anybody on Zoom on this item?
I tech.
I'll close public comment. Counsel? Who wants to make the motion to start this off? Anyone?
I, I will, Your Honor. I, um, I'm good with the proposal. It was good last year. I know we had some issues with a few folks who tradition, wanted to watch more from the pier, and you can certainly do that in six-man and other events, but, um, you know, with the, the ability to have two courts out there to watch during the days and the finals and the, the TV, I think, I think the bases are covered there. And I do, would suggest that we look at, and I don't know where the money would come from with that, maybe it comes from the AVP, but to put up a screen on Polywog Park and see what kind of attendance we can get. But of course, we'll have to advertise it, and no one's gonna show up if we don't let them know it's gonna be there. But I would like to have that as an alternative for folks to, to view as well.
That's a good idea. Councilor Horwath?
Ron, I'm supportive of that. It is on a Sunday, so I wonder if there's a concert, concert in the park, obviously. If there was, we wouldn't do it.
It'd be done by the, um, the, the finals are done by two o'clock, I think, you know.
You're right.
Two or three o'clock, they're done.
Um, so yeah, I'd be supportive of, of that, you know, asking staff to figure out if it's possible and.
Staff can look at, yeah, just direct staff to report back if it's doable.
I'll wrap this up here, so no further comments. It's my fourteenth year, Al, probably with you, the two longest, and Mark and Archie, fourteenth year, and it's in different formats from '05 to on and off till tw, until last year. So it adjusts based on crowd, based on what's going on, economics. We've seen it change over, and I think it's one of the one items, like passing in as a Rose Bowl, this is our Rose Bowl, this is our tournament. The whole country gets to watch and see and appreciate, looking down, you're in New York or London, and you see the, the beautiful Manhattan Beach backdrop every time. So it gives us a right for bragging rights. And the funny thing is, as time goes on, I heard less and less complaints from residents that now it's part of our institutional background to have it here. They look forward to it, they understand what it is. It's temporary use to the beach, we're not blocking access to the beach. You still don't walk to the beach? No one's blocking you. Yes, is it more crowded, more traffic at that time of the year, and there are certain areas you can't walk through, they get it. But not one resident has commented, said, I don't like it, you're taking away, fringing on my right to go to the beach, imposition on my Strand House home, all this, it hasn't happened. So either you're doing a great job, or we're doing all together a great job, people become used to it now, but it's become such an automatic fixture, and it's one, runs so well from our point of view, that we're not getting emails and calls about it. That's the best thing. We get to enjoy it, it sets up when it's supposed to set up, it's gone by time it needed to be gone, and we don't wait till next year. So we shoot success in '23 with it, and you have a first with Councilor Palatano and a second from Mayor Tim Franklin, and voting screen, please.
Just to clarify, that's items B through E on the agenda, plus the direction to the, to the staff about the Jumbotron at Polywog.
As noted.
Motion passes five zero.
Great, thank you, and good luck.
I won't even be in town, I'm so sad.
Just a note for the record, those who are wondering, all of our costs at a city for the MB Open are paid for by the AVP. So police, fire, public works, parks and rec, they're all reimbursed costs. City's not paying any money out to be the host. Next item up, item eighteen, public hearing consideration of resolution providing for annual levy and collection of street lighting and landscaping district maintenance assessments fiscal year twenty to twenty-four, led by Finance Director Sisroian, floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm gonna turn it over to our Financial Services Manager, Libby Brethauer.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor Montgomery and members of the City Council.
Welcome, Libby.
I apologize, this item isn't as fun as Archie's was. But, uh, thank you for the opportunity to present Resolution Number 2380, Providing for the Annual Levy and Collection of Street Lighting and Landscaping District Maintenance Assessments for Fiscal Year 2324. As required by law, the adoption of tonight's resolution was preceded by Resolution Number 2332 on April 4th, which started the three-step process with the ordering of the Engineers' Report, including the plans, specifications, and cost estimates for the annual assessment in fiscal year 2324. This was followed by the adoption of two resolutions on May 16th, including Resolution 2346, which approved the Assessment Engineers' Report, and Resolution 2347, which declared the City Council's intention to provide for the annual levy and collection of assessments for street lighting maintenance and setting the public hearing for tonight on June 20th. So with the approval of the resolution in front of you tonight, assessments will continue to be levied in the new fiscal year beginning July 1st. Assessments are based solely on land use and have not changed since 1996, resulting in a projected deficit in the street lighting fund of $304,852 for fiscal year 2324. Any increase in assessments would require a proposition to eighteen vote. Notification of tonight's public hearing was advertised in the Beach Reporter, and tonight's public hearing is the last City Council action before the assessments are submitted to the county for inclusion on property tax bills. We also have Carol Hill from Harrison Associates in the Zoom tonight. She was the project manager on the Assessment Engineers' Report, and we're both here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Libby. Counsel, any questions on this item? Seeing none, I'll open up public comment. Thank you, Libby, stand by for any questions. Anyone here want to talk about this item? Levy and collection of street lighting and landscaping district maintenance? Seeing none in the audience, how about Zoom? No one on Zoom? All right, we'll close public comment. Counsel? I have a motion by Councilwoman Lesser, a second by Councilwoman Horwath.
Motion would be to adopt Resolution 23-0080, Providing for the Annual Levy and Collection of Fiscal Year 2022-24 Maintenance Assessments.
Perfect. Thank you, and voting screen, please.
Ayes.
Your Honor, my only observation on this right before I vote is that this is another proprietary fund, though, that we, enterprise fund, that we run a deficit in, and there's gonna be some point where we're going to have to go to the voters to increase the levy. I don't think it's been increased since, what, the nineties?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six. Uh, that's when 218 passed, and so it's just another one, we're doing this, but it's being subsidized by the general fund, which means at some point, there won't be as much money for additional services, additional personnel, additional police, additional fire, so something to keep in mind.
I agree completely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item up, first, I'll announce it first, and then we'll announce, Consideration of the Following Action Related to the Marine Field Turf Replacement Project. Councilwoman Lesser.
I have to recuse myself from this item. My wife serves on the board of Vista Mar School, and even though it's a nonprofit organization, she receives no compensation from it in the, just in the best interest for perception. Because Vista Mar School has a role in this item, it, best course is for me to recuse myself, so I'll be stepping away from the dice.
Thank you, sir. But this item is led by, again, Parks Director Mark Lehman. Floor is yours.
Honorable Mayor, member of the City Council, Melissa McCollum, our Senior Recreation Manager, will be presenting this item.
All right, welcome, Melissa.
Thank you. And again, the item before you tonight is Consideration of Funding Options for the Marine Field Turf Replacement Project. As you recall, City Council did authorize staff to solicit bids for replacement turf for the Marine Avenue Athletic Field at your April 18th, 2023 meeting. Public Works staff plans to return to council on July 5th, 2023, to recommend a contract award as well as reallocation of $200,000 from the Deferred Park Maintenance Program and the CIP Fund to help fund the $600,000 project. At the same meeting, City Council directed staff to look into alternative funding models for the, for the Marine Field Turf Replacement Project, as well as future turf replacement projects, in part due to a recommendation from a community member. Staff will present two options this evening to fund the remaining $400,000 needed for the project. Option one, which is our preferred option, is utilizing accumulated County Measure A grant funds in the amount of $400,000. The Measure A Grant Program provides formula-based annual allocations for capital improvement and maintenance parks projects. The current balance in Manhattan Beach's capital account is over $700,000, with an additional allocation of over $150,000 anticipated for 2023, leaving available funding for other priority parks projects as well. The primary advantage of this strategy is the ability to schedule Marine Field using the approved field allocation and use policy without restrictions moving forward. The use policy already provides priority for our Manhattan Beach-based community user groups, but there would be flexibility in where and when user groups are allocated times for both practices and games. In addition, staff does propose returning to City Council with recommendations for updating the following prior to fiscal year 2024, 2025. The per-player fees for youth sports organizations, the field rental fees, as well as dedication of annual field revenue to establish a turf replacement fund for replacing both Marine Field and Manhattan Village, uh, Field Turf every 10 years, and those would be staggered project, projects approximately every five years. We're not proposing specific fee adjustments tonight as additional community outreach is needed. However, fees will be set with the purpose of generating enough, uh, or sufficient revenue to fully fund future turf replacement projects. Option two, for the additional $400,000 of funding for the Marine Turf Replacement Project, is accepting contributions from user groups in exchange for dedicated field use for the next 10 years. This is the method that was used for the original Marine Turf Project in 2013, as well as the Manhattan Village Turf Project in 2018. AYSO and Manhattan Beach Sand and Surf approached staff in the fall of 2022 with a proposal to partner again to pay for new synthetic turf at Marine, and the sports organizations agreed to pay $300,000 for the project. Staff approached Vista Mar School about the possi, possibility of an additional $100,000 contribution, as the school helped pay for the previous project in 2013, and does not utilize field hours that are in demand by other youth sports organizations. So per the draft agreements attached to the staff report, if approved, the city would grant dedicated and exclusive use of the field with no additional charges except for lights from September of 2023 to August of 2033, for a total of 2,100, uh, hours annually, or 21,000 hours over the course of the agreements, in exchange for $400,000 of project funding. So it is clear that the synthetic turf at Marine Field is definitely in need of replacement this year. Staff recommends applying Measure A grant funds in the amount of 400,000 in lieu of accepting private contributions in exchange for dedicated field use. So that does conclude our brief presentation, but we are available for questions.
Well done, Melissa. Stand by for a couple of questions, I'm sure. Councilor Horwath, you're the first up here, I think.
Yes, thank you. And actually, I don't have a question, but I did want to comment, wow, you, you gave a very efficient staff report. I appreciate that, really thorough and quickly done. Not that you had to rush, but thank you, that's all.
Wow.
It was impressive.
Very concise, I like that, too.
Right, yeah.
Anyone else, any questions, comments? I have one, Melissa. I'm glad that you could get AYSO and Sand and Surf on the same page. All of us know it's not easy to do, to balance both those groups. Seems like you guys have done that. The only question I couldn't answer from the emails about it was, I don't know what field turf number it is. What are we on now, Archie? Seven, Melissa, seven, field turf, seven or eight? And the Martyrs, I think, put in seven, if you walk on the Martyrs Field, and if you walk over to the field over at, um, Redondo's Field, well, the field turf, seven? They have longer blades of grass, and then it's a little more balanced, a little more cushion on their, on their field. Do we know what field turf we're gonna use to replace what's there?
So that is what we're returning on July 5th, uh, with a report on that proposal and the details of that and the, the contract award. Um, we can talk about it now, or we can come back on July 5th and give you the details.
Well, it's fine, it's curious if you guys know, we could go to SoFi and take a piece out of their carpet and take a bath.
Right, right.
But it's great.
We think you'll be pleased, but.
Yeah? Thank you. Councilor Palatano?
Is there gonna be a logo in the middle again?
Yes.
Is it gonna be the seal or a logo?
The new city seal.
The seal or the logo?
The new city brand.
The new brand.
Would be in, we had the design.
That would be better.
There's your vision.
It was great, Melissa, thank you for that. Stand by for any comments that we have. Public comment, who wants to talk about our new turf field at Marine Park? Anyone? No? How about on Zoom, Martha? No raised hands for the field? Wow, that's really gonna compromise everybody. All right, we'll close public comment. Counsel? Councilor Horwath, you're up again.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I am in support of option one. I think it is thrilling, actually, that we are able to identify, um, Measure A funding to replace the turf and, and not go out to the user groups, I mean, they'll pay user fees. I think this is the way, the optimal way to do it, uh, because this way, we, we can allocate the time as we need to, you know, and if, if we want it for other community groups that aren't soccer teams or whatever, we can do that. Um, I, I want to say, though, um, to the groups that have contributed huge amounts of money in the past, you know, we wouldn't have had the great soccer fields we had without it. It was truly, you know, that's what's been so wonderful in this community, is to see the private-public partnerships that have evolved and that have been so fruitful, but this is the right way to try to fund city infrastructure, city facilities. So I'm thrilled that we can do this, and that will be my motion to approve option one.
Councilor Palatano?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with option one. I can't say I'm as thrilled, in fact, I'm, I'm rather conflicted, uh, because I'm not a fan of, of artificial turf fields. And I get that the users like them, they're user-friendly for the most part. In a lot of ways, very low maintenance for them, and it's still some maintenance for us, but, you know, I, I find a little bit of hypocrisy with our environmental goals, and then not only just the synthetic nature of it, and I would question whether the drainage is the same as natural turf, but it's also just the heat generation. If you've been down there, I'm sure you have, I have too, but, I mean, it is degrees difference when you're on there. It takes a toll on the players, but it takes a toll generally. We talk about, um, how, uh, concrete and streets and the, um, the hard surface, the impermeable surfaces, uh, contribute to heat in cities, and you create heat deserts in cities, and this is one of those contributing things. So I'm not thrilled about replacing artificial turf with artificial turf. I get that's where we're going. I guess we'll see where it goes. I, I, I hope in the future that we have a better solution, a cooler solution in the future, because it is, it's five, 10 degrees hotter in those things.
Absolutely. Mayor Tim Franklin?
Yes, thank you. So, um, I've seen the difference from between not having turf and having turf, and I think there's far fewer injuries on, you know, having turf. That particular field, I remember rocks coming up, you know, from the, you know, from before. That isn't to say that it could not have been treated better and planted better, but in the reality, towards the end of the season, especially with the wear and tear, you know, a, a, a natural turf field just doesn't maintain, you know, it can't be maintained, it's, except at great, great expense. I don't know what the factor is, but I'm sure, um, it's probably higher to maintain that. I think we're just gonna have to trust that the technology is just getting better and better with an eye towards, you know, the safety of the children, and also that are playing, you know, who are playing, and even the adults when they play, and, um, you know, the environmental, you know, issues that come, and so I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna support option number one. I think, oh boy, I mean, you talk about turf wars, I remember coaching and, you know, just field time is such a, uh, you know, it, it's such a big issue, and I think, uh, returning it to the Parks and Recreation, they're, they're gonna be the best arbiters of, you know, who plays when, and also for like, you know, as Councilmember Horwath mentioned, the spontaneous kind of events that might happen as well, so, thank you.
Anyone have, thank you. Anyone have any comments about the field use side letters in the city and AYSO and Sand and Surf, any issues with that?
I, I think, uh, we might be able to change it to Richmond, or whatever.
Yes. Believe?
Believe.
All right. Uh, I'll wrap up here. Those of us that played on AstroTurf One, uh, Astrodome, Texas, AstroTurf One, it was a thin layer of AstroTurf, uh, with no pellets in between it, no overlayer of, of concrete. I saw the turf burns from football, trying to remember all that, and there was no cushion back then. You just hit the ground and bounced back up. So the generation now that you're on seven, I think is the last version I've seen, that it gives you, that's, it's a lot more forgiving, number one, there's, it's a sponge push-off when you push off of it. And to Steve's point, I think it is a warmer climate, I can tell you, in the summertime or in spring training, I can tell you that the heat on the thing is immense when it's hot outside, and think, I, the temperatures in Texas here are, but there is a heat differential on your bottom of your cleats, it's so, you know, the plastic will melt, it gets that hot. Here, hopefully, we don't ever see that, but it's still a concern going forward versus the option that Mayor Tim Franklin mentioned, um, the best option going forward. So if someone invents a better temperature use or cooling, how to get that done, I think it's the best option going forward, plus the fact that the county gives us $400,000 back of our own money to pay for $600,000 project. I mean, they won't be paying $200,000 into it, that to me is another major decision while we're doing this, moving it forward versus fertilizer and grass and wear and tear and broken ankles that we're seeing from, after, from regular grass. So I appreciate everybody's comments tonight, and the first from Councilwoman Horwath, and a second by Mayor Tim Franklin on both items A and B, on Resolution Number, what's Resolution Number you want, Councilwoman Horwath?
You know, the one that it was. It is, uh, 23 dash zero one one five.
And so that, no action on the side letters? This.
Right.
It's just, um, we'll get the fund.
Yeah.
Right. So that was option B, and so you're, you're gone with option A.
On option A.
Option A, got it. Voting screen.
Do we need to go to David's and press abstain? Or is that okay? All right.
We'll do it. Motion passes four zero one, with Councilmember Lesser abstaining.
Thank you. Thank you all, well done.
Here he comes.
Okay. Let's see, item L, City Council Request Reports, according to AB 1234. Anyone go anywhere the last, since the last council meeting? Did you go anywhere? Any meetings offsite with any other DAs anywhere in the country?
With the district attorney.
Okay, you reported that. Councilwoman Horwath, did you go anywhere?
You're a coast of graduation.
Yes, you were there, thank you for representing.
And MB minutes.
That's true, had a good time there. Congrats also to, I know she's not watching, but Hillary, I may had, and all the rest of the people at the MB out for a successful wine auction. I don't know what the, I don't know what toll number they raised.
1.3, I think.
But I thank PD for being there as well, chief and your people. I, I like the new design now, they block traffic at Parkview.
Oh, it's perfect.
Coming behind the mall to stop the, I would call the distracted drivers driving eastbound on Parkview to the Country Club. It forced all access to come in off Rosecrand to the Connecticut Parking Lot. It really forced the rideshare users, Uber and Lyft to come later on, it was much more organized, so. Everyone there, chief, that was there and also on the list to you, the City Manager mode, all officers worked it. It's such a simple program, when they ban it that way, it's no headaches, no confused drivers, and no accidents, which is the key here, that whole night long, so props everyone of all for doing that. Next item up is item 21, Consider Request by Myself, Mayor Tim Franklin, and Discuss and discuss revisiting the appointment to the Los Angeles County West Vector Control Board, City Manager Mode, you want to start, and I'll follow behind you?
Uh, sure, this was, uh, something, as you mentioned, that yourself and Mayor Pro Tim Franklin brought up at the last meeting, so we're looking for a third vote to move this forward, if you so desire.
City Mayor, City Attorney Quinn, tonight, can I talk about this, any deal, or just looking for a straight third vote?
It's on the agenda, but we're, we're just looking for a, a third vote tonight.
And no discussion past that point?
Correct.
Don't mention how this, uh, item came on, came on the agenda?
Yeah, you can explain why you're seeking a third vote.
Okay, those who are not familiar with this item, comments made to me, so anonymous, so not so anonymous, uh, concerned with the, the process of appointment here, they don't believe, they did not believe by watching the actual, um, council meeting where this appointment was made, that this item reserved the same amount of review that the other in-depth appointments were made, and that concerned them, and also looking at other outside comments that were made, so that's why Representative Franklin and I put this on the agenda to discuss the review process, and that legitimate concerns that some residents believed that were overlooked deserve a second chance, that's as far as I'll go with it, without getting to the details. So, Councilor Palatano?
Question to the City Attorney, can council remove a commissioner or appointee to Vector Control just like any other commissioner at any time that it desires?
Um, yes, up to a point, um, if Vector Control appoints the member, you've lost that jurisdiction.
Right, but if we appoint them to Vector Control, we retain that?
No, only, so the city, um, appoints a representative to Vector Control, and then if the Vector Control takes it, um, if they get sworn in at Vector Control, at a beginning, you've lost, the city's lost jurisdiction.
Okay. So, you want to make a comment, Jim?
No.
You're good. Okay, so looking for a third vote to have this review process looked at in this one appointment, that's what we're looking for, and see the VIBI Council colleagues besides Representative Franklin, believe that deserves a review. So, seeing none, seeing none, everybody's sitting tight, all right? So the item fails, but of, by the lack of a third vote. Next item up, as you agenda items, item M. Representative Franklin, you're the first one up, then Councilor Lesser.
Uh, yes, yeah, so, um, I've gotten a lot of comments from, um, uh, from concerned residents about the, the new logo, the new, uh, the new logo on the police vehicles, uh, in terms of its, um, of its size, it's difficult to read, they didn't quite know, it's very difficult to see, the Manhattan Beach logo, and just would like to, uh, uh, bring it to council to discuss what went into this, and to.
Give people's opinions of it.
I'll be your, I'll be your second, if you want one, I'll be your second.
Yeah, I know, it's trivial, but.
City manager, but do you need a third, or are you looking for?
Just two at this point, sits inside on the agenda, so next. Next meeting, third.
All right. First by Representative Franklin, and a second by Councilor Lesser, Councilor Lesser, you're up.
So it's been brought to my attention that there might be an opportunity to trademark our pier, uh, I have some questions about whether that's even possible, because of limits on, on getting a mark for an architectural work built before nineteen ninety, but in consultation with the city attorney, he indicated that at a minimum, he needed council direction to explore the issue, and then report back to council.
I'll support that, that's something I've.
Question, I mean, that includes investigation, since it's a state-owned pier?
So that is one of the questions that would need to be reviewed, and in fact, may have been reviewed in the past, but to the extent staff was going to spend time on what the issue may be, what the options were, would be, uh, the city attorney wanted direction and approval, at least for, uh, two votes.
And so that would go to any images of it, we would get some percentage or?
Awesome.
Possibly, and potentially have rights to limit how it could be utilized, yeah.
Then all those posts on Facebook.
Yeah, I don't know, I thought, at least it's worth exploring.
Was that a second vote?
Yeah, well, yeah, to bring it back for discussion, I'm not sure, you know.
Yes. First and a second.
Yes, we may come back with a staff report that says it's state-owned and.
State-owned.
No further comment, we get it, I understand.
Could I make a, just a general comment?
Yeah. Go ahead.
No, it's just a general comment, for instance, me voting or saying, yeah, sure, let's talk about that, only means, yeah, let's talk about it.
Oh, no, no, you support it.
I'm just letting the public know, the process, thank you.
Anyone else have future items? No one? City manager report?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
City Attorney report?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing informational, exciting for what to talk about, no closed session, with that, we're going to adjourn to closed session on Wednesday, July fifth, remind everybody, we're not having a council meeting on Tuesday, July fourth, it is Wednesday, July fifth, at five PM in City Council Chambers, all right?
It's a full meeting.
Full meeting.
At five.
For the closed session.
Yes, closed session at five, full meeting to follow, thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.